I'd like to, I'd like to bring to order our regular meeting of the Southfield, Southfield City Council for January 10th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Present.
Brightwell.
Here.
Cruz. Frazier.
Here.
Hoskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Madam President, you do have a quorum and to excuse Councilman Cruz.
Yes, Councilman Cruz is at home with COVID tonight. He's on day five, so he's recuperating from that, or whatever you want to call it. Where you have to quarantine, he's quarantined, he's on day five of the quarantine for COVID. So let's keep him in our prayers and our thoughts. So it's very, the COVID numbers are going up. So I'm encouraging everyone to please get your vaccination, wear your mask, and do your social distancing. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, this is our first in-person meeting for 2022. This is a fluid situation. We are monitoring all of our options. Right now, this is, we are not allowed to meet virtually, we have to do it in person. So we just welcome everyone here, and as we stated, when you are here, if you would please wear your mask and social distance. Also, we may be experiencing some technical difficulties due to, again, this being our first in-person meeting, and we're trying to make sure that everything is connected and working properly, so please bear with us as we work through all of the little ins and outs of our first meeting. Thank you. First on our agenda is our appointments. The first appointment is for Code Enforcement Officer. And I believe that's you, Mr. Zorn.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we'd like to introduce Ruby Williams, and we're asking Council to appoint her as a constable, a constable within our code division. I have Tyree Speaks in the audience tonight. If Tyreeks would like to make a few comments, Ms. Williams has been with our Building Department for a while. But we're asking Council to appoint her pursuant to Chapter 124 of the city code, and that she'll be have responsibilities for Section 17, 33, 34, 45, 82, and 99, 100, 102, and 111, 113. And I list those sections in the background statement of the communication.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Council. Sorry. Thank you, thank you. Ruby Williams has been with the city for over three years, as initially as a housing inspector. We're welcoming her to Code Enforcement as a Code Enforcement Officer. She has over 15 years' experience as a Code Enforcement Officer in, I believe, Inkster and Ann Arbor. She's doing a great job thus far, and I, we're welcoming her to Code Enforcement and would wish for her to become a sworn constable. Thank you.
Thank you. Council? Councilman Brightwell?
I think this is a very wonderful appointment, and a worthy appointment. But an item on the write-up, in reading the write-up, with respect to fiscal impact, there's nothing there that, that tells us what the fiscal impact will be. Clearly, a salary is a fiscal impact, so I don't know why that, that was blank. I mean, there's nothing there. And the most clear thing is the salary and anything else that would be associated with that, that position. I think it's a wonderful, but Mr. Zorn, if you could amend this at some point in time or let us know what the fiscal impact would be?
Certainly, that, oh, certainly. If I may, the Chair, the position is budgeted. It is a budgeted position that is on field right now. So there, it should be a neutral impact, and I apologize. Candidly, we used a letter from a previous setting, and it, we will get that information to Council.
Okay, it's no problem. Otherwise, everything is lovely, and I'll be supportive of this appointment, and that was just a clear one. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
To Mr. Zorn, did you say this person was originally in the Building Department and is now being hired by Code Enforcement?
That is correct. She was originally hired in the Building Department as a building apartment inspector, if I recall correctly.
A housing inspector.
Housing inspector.
Okay, so she's going from a housing inspector to working with Code Enforcement to be a constable, and you said the salary will be lateral?
The salary would be consistent with what we're currently paying our constables now. I, at this time, I'm not familiar with what that salary is. There, if, if I may, Tyree, do you know if there's, there, this was an internal posting through T-P, T-Pom. The applicant applied, as Ms. Speaks has indicated, she's previously been a code officer in both Ann Arbor and Inkster, and I can't candidly speak to the salary. I'm, I would assume it is a step up in compensation.
I believe it is, it is the same. It was an internal transfer. It is not a promotion.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. She does have some past history of Inkster and Ann Arbor as a Code Enforcement?
I'm sorry, yes, she does have 15 years' experience, seven years at one city and eight in another.
Okay, the reason I ask that is, each city has their own book of codes, and when she's working for the city of Southfield as a Code Enforcement Officer, she needs to apply our codes and not go from memory? Is there any kind of a training to make sure that she understands what our codes are so that, because we do have some that many times has come before the Council that there was conflict between the Code Enforcement people and the citizens? And I can think of one of where you store your garbage cans? So is there training involved?
Yes, she's being cross-trained by the, the staff and myself, and she is familiar with our codes. As I stated, she's been with the Building Department for three years. She is familiar with Chapter 3 IPMC. She is also with IH, is it IHH? I'm sorry. ICC. She has training as a building, with the Building Department, and she's familiar with our codes.
Well, the Building Department is one thing, but the Code Enforcement people really deal from the outside because they drive down the road and they see some things which is some, I guess it's, they overlap. But I just want her to have a smooth transition between what she's doing now and what she will be doing, so that there's not conflict with the residents, other than the fact that they may not want to do what they're supposed to.
Yes, Councilman Frazier, she is being cross-trained by the other Code Enforcement officers and myself.
Okay, and one last question. There's an automobile involved. Do you already have an automobile for her to, to drive, or?
Yes, we, we had a Code Enforcement Officer resign. She is driving his vehicle, his previous vehicle.
Very good, that's it.
If I may, Madam President, there are six positions budgeted. This will be the counting, Ms. Speaks, who's the Director of the Department. There are four other constables. There will, we will have one vacant constable position as well. And we have ample vehicles for the people, tablets, other communication devices. We, upon this appointment, we'll still have one vacancy in the group. And if I may, Ms. Speaks, how many non-career do you have in your group as well?
We have roughly 25 non-career. Two of them are the blight abatement staff, and the others are parking enforcement officers.
And all of those positions are budgeted?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we see no other questions. Mayor, did you want to have a comment? Thank you. Council, would you care to vote?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the appointment of Ruby S. Williams, Code Enforcement Officer, as a city constable.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the appointment of our Code Enforcement Officer as city constable, Ruby Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, Council.
Madam Chair, I'd point out that there is a posting currently up for the other code officer, if anybody in the listening audience is interested, there's a job available.
Thank you very much. Next, we move to reappointments and appointments by the Boards and Commissions.
Yes, thank you. The Boards and Commissions Committee, consisting of myself, Councilman Hoskins, and Councilman Cruz, interviewed many residents, and we have recommendations on reappointments and appointments for several boards. The Board of Review, we have the reappointment of Eric Edwards, and we'd like to appoint Kiara Thomas as an alternate. The Fire and Police Retirement System Board, we want to, we would like to reappoint Dwayne Garth and Audrey Harvey. For the Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals, we would like to appoint Noah Klein. For the Public Arts Commission, a reappointment of Yvonne Malinsky. The Total Living Commission, an appointment of Pierre Denise Gilliam, and an appointment of Brenda Chambers Threet. For the Veterans Commission, the reappointment of Barbara Selden, and the reappointment of Rodney Carruthers. And for the Wildlife Commission, a reappointment of Janelle Constem and Tiffany Gotcher, and the appointment of Sarah Vermilio. The Zoning Board of Appeals, the appointment of Benjamin Havus as an alternate. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Council?
I move that we follow through with the appointments as presented.
Support. Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of the reappointment and appointments as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
If I may, if any of those, if any of those residents are here in the audience, would you like to stand up and be recognized? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Ms. Selden, she'd like to reach out to me and to inform the Council that she was at a previous engagement, just she could not cancel, that's why she's not here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we have two sets of minutes to approve. Committee of the whole meeting minutes of December 6th, and our regular meeting minutes of December 13th.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of the committee of the whole minutes of December 6th, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes of December 13th, 2021.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the approval of our minutes of the committee of the whole meeting, December 6th, 2021, and our regular meeting minutes of December 13th, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes approved. Next, we have our consent agenda, where we have items A through G. Item A is the purchase of the election forms and supplies. Item B is receive and file Public Act 202 of 2017, Protecting Local Government Retirement Benefits Annual Report. Item C is the authorization to the two-year extension of our lease with Lawrence Tech University in Oakland County, Michigan Works. D is to the authorization to sign a two-year lease for the dark fiber for Oakland County, Michigan Works. E is the Oakland County, Michigan Works, the Wagner Pfizer Grants Acceptance. Item F is the Oakland County, Michigan Works County Partnership Accountability Training Hope Grant. And item G is the Oakland County, Michigan Works Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Grants. Council, is there anything you'd like to have pulled for discussion? Hearing none.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda items A through G, as presented.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Frazier, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of consent agenda items A through G as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council, we have no public hearings or site plans tonight. Next, we will go to our agenda items for discussion and action if we so approve. Our first item is the authorization to purchase high-speed doors for the Public Works Department.
Madam President, Kevin Turnquest, Superintendent from the Department of Public Works, is here to speak to items A and B, the next two items. If, if he may, Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This, this purchase that we're doing here is for the DPW, the front and the back door, the, the big roll-up doors. I've been at the city, I've been at the building for 27 years, and I don't think I've seen the doors replaced. We've had panels replaced, we've had the doors bumped and hit, but the, the motors were replaced once with a really slow motor, so I timed it at almost two minutes to open up and, and close. And, and I went down, down the road to the county building, and it was, it was a 30-second operation over there. So the problem is, over the years, the, the doors have been bumped and, and the tracks are bent, and, you know, we've replaced panels. In our recent couple of years, we've taken on raccoons. Because the water department, they might have something going in the middle of the night, the back door opens, the vehicles leave, and we've taken on a lot of raccoons, and they've kind of caused us some havoc at the building. So this is to replace front and rear, rip it down, and start new with a higher-speed motor.
Thank you. Would you have a seat for one second?
Okay.
Council? Yes, Councilman Brightwell?
I clearly see the need for this. In, in reading through, as I intuitively know what the location is, but can someone put an address on this particular item? Or state, stated where, where this is actually going on? I know it's the building, a round building or whatever, but there's no address in this document to indicate where this is actually located.
So the address to the DPW building is 25501 Clara Lane?
Okay, so is there any way of amending this so it would just be a little more clear in the documentation?
Sure, to reflect in there, yes.
Okay, that's, that's all I hear.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, when I was reading through this, I didn't quite understand the cost. For one door, it's, well, I don't have it in front of me now, but for one door, it's what, $77,000? But it sounds like there was, you weren't going to take down the correct door. At least it didn't read that way. I'm sure that you are going to, but can you explain what's going to happen?
Sure. So it was, it was proposed in two different ways. One way was to leave the current track and doors there, and then add a new door on the outside of the building. What it, what we did was, we reached out to the Building Department, our own Building Department, and a couple of the, of the guys came over and looked at it and said it would, you know, in a sense, you're going to have four doors that you're doing maintenance on, and they didn't like the height, you know, having, having the two doors on each end, and they just said it would not be a good idea. Maintenance on four doors, cheaper to tear everything, you know, tear the tracks down, put new, new doors, new high-speed motors, and start fresh that way.
Okay, that-
Because it was proposed two different ways.
Yeah, that, that's kind of the way I visualize that it would happen. And I said, if you don't take the old door down, does that mean that somebody that wants to get in, you know, hits the door opener and one door goes up, then you have to hit another door opener and another door goes up, or?
I think they were gonna, the conversation, they were going to leave the two doors rolled up, and then they would be like a backup door if needed. Yeah, no, having, having two doors would be, yeah.
Yeah, it didn't seem to make any sense to me, so.
No, no.
I appreciate the, the way you came out.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think if we replace everything, it'll be a nice clean look.
Yeah.
And when I started here, we had fast doors, you know, and they were, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, in, in my early years, when they, they did replace the motors at, at one time, and they went to slower, slower motors. I'm not, I'm not sure why, though. I, I don't have that history, but, but I just, you know, I, I have a lot of dealings down the street with, lately with Oakland County, and so when this came up, you know, I, I went down there because they've added on to their building and outbuilding, and, and I really wanted to see what they had going on, so I, I took my phone and I, you know, I did a recording of both, and, and, yeah, it was, it was a noticeable difference. I mean, there's a heat loss.
Yes.
And, but the, the raccoon thing was, that was a big deal, because, you know, the water department at night, they're in, and, and they're working a main break or something, and the doors open, and it, it was one, two, and then eight, and it was, they were multiplying, and, and the, you know, when they were done, and when the building was closed, what they did was, they went around and, and they were in the garbage, they were, you know, so they, they really did cause a lot of, you know, a lot of problems in our, in our building.
Okay, so that, the, part of the justification was the heat loss, but you also brought up the, the raccoon problem, so that is an indication that when people go in and out, they should open the door, go out, shut the door behind them so that?
Yeah, we, we have sensors, so when you pull up with the vehicle, you know, and, and from the outside coming in, there's sensors in the cement, so it, it opens that way, and then, you know, if we came in the building, if I was the first one there, you know, then I, I key in, and then I turn everything on from inside, and there's sensors, but, yeah, really, the, the, the big problem was, you know, we got the, the animal control warden, he's retired now, but when he was here, he set me, set some traps up, and it was, I couldn't believe every day we were, we were trapping, so.
Okay.
It was definitely a bigger problem than, than we knew.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Madam President, if we could amend that resolution, Department of Public Works building located at Clara Lane, that would correct the deficiency in the item.
Okay. Ready to vote on it, or you want it, Council? Okay. Would someone make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we move the, that we authorize the purchase of high-speed doors from KVM Door System of Clinton Township at a cost of $80,730. For the Public Works building located at 25501 Clara Lane. Thank you.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the authorization to purchase the high-speed doors for the Public Works Department at 25501 Clara Lane, Southfield, Michigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the authorization to purchase dump trucks for streets and highways. Mr. Turnquest?
So I got involved in this one after it, after it started. We have three trucks that are, dump trucks, that are eight and a half years old, and around the eight-year mark is when we, when we start to think, you know, that we're going to go out to auction. I know that mileage is a, is a, is a thing, you know, people look at the mileage, it's different than buying a vehicle. So what I did was, because of the conversation of the, the mileage and, and the age of the trucks, well, first, we put in to get three of, we have 11 trucks. So we put in to get the oldest three replaced. And when we put it in, put the request in, Freightliner is where we, we get them from, and Freightliner, at the beginning of COVID, said, "You guys aren't going to get your hands on any trucks." They, they just stopped production. So at that point, it was kind of a, it wasn't really, you know, it wasn't really a subject, we were just going to see what we could do with what we had. So then, they contacted us because another municipality had two trucks that they, they backed out on. So our salesman called Mr. Clark and Motor Pool and, and said, "Hey, I've got these trucks." They backed out, if you want them, you know, you can get your hands on them. So started the conversation again. So the three trucks that we have have metal beds, steel beds, and they are getting to the point where they're, they're rusting and they're rotting, and the, the other trucks that we have, the other eight, have been replaced with stainless steel beds, and the trucks are really proven to be better trucks, and I, better built. So what we're, what we're finding right now is, if we need parts, the parts were two body styles behind. So if you have a 2013 Mustang, you can get parts. If you have a 2013 Freightliner, it's a challenge. So with, with the two that were available, I was asked to look at cities that are comparable. And, and I was always told that Farmington Hills and Troy were similar in size, you know, in, in the same, you know, they're, they're the two comparable cities. So that being said, I, I made it a point to meet with both cities, and I talked to their motor pools and, and got some information. Farmington Hills has 17 trucks in their highway department. We have 11. Keeping in mind that when it snows, we have eight, we have nine routes, and we have 11 trucks. So there's two that are, you know, we'll call them extra trucks, but if something's going on with water, or something else is going on in highway, they're not really extra trucks. Troy has 24 trucks. So with our eleven compared to the seventeen and the twenty-four. We auction out here at eight years is when we start to, start to think about replace. Troy is at sixteen years, but with twenty-four trucks, they rotate, they rotate heavy. So our truck is salt and snow in the winter. And then pulling equipment and ditching in the summer. So our trucks are, really, they don't get a rest period. Um, so what I've, what I've found is Farmington Hills, they're eleven, thirteen years at the top. So at eleven years, they replace. But with the um, you know, with seventeen trucks. You know, eh, to compare them, I think that we're, we're good with eleven trucks. Our building supports eleven trucks. We have room for eleven trucks. But I think that um, you know, with our, with the engine hours, that's the, that's the big calculation. So the engine hours on three different, and, and it was, it was really pushed by Farmington Hills, not so much by Troy. But the engine hours, um, they say take the engine hours times sixty. And I looked it up and I found it on multiple sites. And that will give you quote-unquote engine mileage. You know, like an eighteen-wheeler might, might put on a hundred eighty thousand going back and forth to California. So if you take that calculation, our vehicles, the ones that we're looking to replace are two hundred and twenty-seven thousand miles and two hundred and twenty thousand miles. So what I've got is the beds that are rotting, you know, that are rusting. That's my first concern. Second concern is getting parts. You know, the parts are definitely tough to get. And the third concern is, which I think is the biggest one, is Freightliner told me that two to three years, probably three years before I can get my hands on another truck. And that's getting the truck in three years. I'm gonna need a year to build it. Cause they, they take a year once they get the truck and then they outfit it and make it for us. So if I go two to three years, they told me, pfft, count on three, plus the extra year. That's four years. That's concerning to me. You know, that, that's a, that's a concern to me uh with parts and stuff like that. I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be tough. And I, and that two to three years, there's no guarantee on that.
Okay. Madam President, I just wanted to point out uh just a couple of other things. In this proposal, we're proposing to verse what was in front of council two weeks ago. To not dispose of the two vehicles and to send that, the disposal of the vehicles to the finance committee. So the, if you recall, the last item was suggesting we dispose of, of the vehicles. Here we're saying we're gonna refer that to finance committee. The actual action is just for the purchase of, of the two vehicles. Then I wanna touch on auction mileage. Southfield has been auctioning its vehicles that uh, when our mileage after eight years hits forty-seven thousand to fifty-three thousand miles. Um, Troy is hitting fifty to sixty thousand, um, and their vehicles are sixteen. But what I thought was real interesting was Farmington Hills keeping its vehicles eleven to thirteen years. But they're auctioning them out at thirty-five thousand miles. During the last meeting, one of the conversations was these vehicles should be getting a couple hundred thousand miles. I think these vehicles are, are different because of the nature of what they carry, the weight, and then what, what they're pulling. But if you begin looking, an eight-year life, you know, we've built our model. Eh, uh, Mr. Turnquest has referenced nine routes. We've built our model around what our, what our roundhouse can hold. Um, we have ele- eleven trucks. We've been working a rotation that's basically an eight-year cycle. Our peers are keeping sixteen years, but hitting approximately the same amount of miles. So yes, they're keeping them longer. I would argue that they probably have higher maintenance costs with that lur- service life. Because they're not able to get the parts, they're in constant repair. But in the end, the wash is almost the same. That you've got um, and you know, let's call it fifty thousand miles for our, our vehicles. Troy's selling at fifty thousand. And, but yet Farmington Hills, who's keeping theirs at eleven to thirteen, is thirty-five thousand. I would argue we are actually getting a, a larger, a longer service life. And I will tell you, my thirteen years, this was one of the toughest write-ups to do and get my hands around. I'm not an engine truck guy to figure this out. I, I turned a motor pool. But when I started looking at the other communities, the service life and the miles. I think in some ways, we're stretching ours a, a little longer without the headache of the constant repair and parts. Um, the disposal I really struggled with, is there another uh use for these vehicles? Deputy McReena and I were talking uh late Friday afternoon and it's like, well, where will we keep these things? And you know, I, and what I wanted to do in the interim, cause what we have is Freightliner saying, look, you have an option to pick up these vehicles. If not, we're gonna offer them to another community. Um, and you know, it could very well be a sales pitch. We all hear them e- e- every day. Um, but what I, we did hear consistently, I was talking to some folks in Taylor, they're also saying the same thing. You just can't go to the Ford dealer and pick these things up. And what I didn't realize was that these are two to three years in, in the making. And now I'm flashing back to what we went through with our fire department. We went out, we ordered that almost two years before we could get. And surprisingly, I, I guess this is just how these industries work. Um, Kevin Clark and Kevin Turnquest, uh, our, our resident expert spoke to our peers. I went and talked to some people that I worked with years ago and trying to make sense of this. But you know, so in hindsight, you know, we're asking to, for us to make the purchases we originally did a week ago. Or uh, or I'm sorry, on December thirteenth. And uh, we would have our finance committee address the disposal of the two trucks.
If I, if I may say, the um, the sales guy that we have, uh, when he called um and, and asked. He has cities that are, that are, I don't, I don't feel that it was a sales pitch. I, I really feel that he has cities and, and so talking to him, um, Kevin and myself talked to him. And, and um, you know, we thanked him for getting back to us when the two were released um, from the other city, when they let him, let him go back out into the, the market. Um, and, and I promised him that in the morning. I told him I was gonna be at this meeting and I promised him in the morning, a phone call either way. Um, it wasn't, I don't, I don't feel that he was, you know, he wasn't strong-arming me for the sale.
And that, you know, is probably the cynic in me, you know, when dealing with these things, so.
Yeah, well, you, a car salesman's a car salesman, but I, 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 he didn't have, there wasn't any type of pressure. In fact, I, you know, just to get him to wait until the morning. He was, he was actually so nonchalant about it. He did, he said, please just, yeah, just call me in the, in the, you know, on the eleventh and let me know either way. So there was, there was no pressure on, on my end.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, Mr. Turnquest, thank you very much for a um very informative um presentation.
You're welcome.
Um, I do have a few questions, please. Not sure if you can answer them. If these trucks were to go out to auction, our two vehicles, approximately how much would the city receive?
I can't answer that. Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry, Councilwoman Banks. I, that, that is something um, that process and what they, what they actually, you know, what, what the city gets in return, I, I, I would be making up a number.
And then um, you know, there's a big shortage of chips. Will there be any chip shortage problems with the purchase of these two vehicles?
I don't think so, no. They told me that it's, it's gonna be the year build. But if, 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 uh, if you remember, eh, we put in for a sign shop truck. You know, it was also a, a, I think it was a ninety-eight or something, you know, and it was. And, and they're building it right now. It's that year long. It, no, I didn't get any, anything that there would be any shortages or anything like that. Um, but it's, yeah, the year, it just, it, it actually blows my mind that it takes a year to build it. But that was, uh, we experienced this before, you know, before COVID.
And then what type of bed will these two new trucks have?
Stainless, just like, yeah, like, yeah, we've, we've been going with the stainless. Cause every aspect of the, the bed and the auger and the spinner and, and all the metal components that come with the, the truck, the stainless right now, they, they don't even. When we wash them and clean them, they look brand new. Yeah, it's definitely the way to go. I would, I would go no other way.
Okay, and then um, I, I'm glad this is gonna come to the finance committee to review. Because just in doing a little bit of research that I did with vehicles, um, you know, they say like dump trucks usually average between seven to ten years as far as turnover, um, fifty to seventy-five thousand miles. But you're almost on point as far as the um truck engine life. They say usually it's two hundred and fifty thousand miles, so um, who knows, maybe by next year, we could almost be at that number.
Yeah, and it, and it was Farmington Hills, um, with what, going over and visiting and talking with them. They said three thousand engine hours um is, is, they, that like, they, they don't cross that number. So twenty-five hundred to three thousand engine hours is when they, when they really start to, you know, start to push and, and auction and, and move. And, and both of our trucks, so my trucks are thirty-seven hundred and thirty-six hundred engine hours, you know, so I'm, I'm, I'm over that. And, and my fear is that, you know, if I've gotta wait four years, when, when it snows, you know, what, what? I'm on the guys, cause I came from, from the ranks up and I've got nine routes. Right now I have one truck with a, a turbo that's, something went into the turbo and it's down. So I go from eleven to ten, you know, the turbo's being rebuilt. It's the, it's the cheaper way to do it. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be a, could be three weeks till I get it back up and running. So it's, it's a concern to me.
Thank you. Think you've answered all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, just, just out of curiosity, we, we have, we compared ourselves to Troy and Farmington Hills. And even though they are a little bigger, um, Farmington Hills has more than double the amount of trucks. And I understand that's something we're gonna be looking at in our finance committee is, you know, keep, how long do I keep the trucks? But why, why do they have so many more?
So they have seventeen and we have eleven.
I'm sorry, Troy though has-
Yeah, Troy, I, you know, s- they just keep trucks and they, and they, so when they break down, they don't have to jump on them right away. And then they have trucks that are dedicated to their, to their ditching only. So they have dedicated trucks to dedicated crews. We go, all of our dump trucks in the winter, dedicated to snow removal and ice and salting. You know, main breaks. Um, and then when we get back to the summer, it's those same trucks. Why our engine hours are high like that, that pull the big trailers with the mowers. You know, that, that go out and haul the material for our ditching crews and stuff like that, so. I, I don't know, I'm torn. I mean, if I had, if I had twenty-four trucks, it would be great because I would have a lot to choose from, but I don't know where I would put twenty-four trucks. So yeah, I don't know. I, I was actually shocked when I, when I got the, you know, when I talked to their motor pool and, and they had twenty-four trucks. I would have never, you know, I wouldn't have guessed it.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, Troy still does the Troy School District service work?
I'm sorry, what was that, Fred?
Troy Motor Pool does Detroit School District pool uh buses and that?
You know what, I'm not sure.
They did for years. I don't know if that's still, but I think they work a very different model pool. They actually have not just theirs, but other entities work. And it may be a scheduling thing, but I was shocked at the number as well.
Yeah, I mean, I had more questions for them, but it was, it'd be honest with you, it was really hard to. Farmington Hills is easy to get ahold of, but uh, they were hard to really get me to pin somebody down and, and, and give me some time.
And you said Troy did not monitor the engine hours, that was if I was-
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, they, they did not, cause I asked about engine hours as it compares to auction. And, and they, they did not keep track of engine hours. Farmington Hills for sure. Um, but yeah, Troy, no, no track on the engine hours.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Brightwell.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, just from a layman's standpoint, can you explain to me why dump trucks are so expensive?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, why what is expensive?
Why dump trucks are so expensive, just from a layman's standpoint.
Well, I mean, they're, they're built to, they're like tanks. They're, they're built really strong. And, and the way we outfit them with the, you know, with the plows, with the underbodies, with, with all the snow stuff. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're big and they're expensive.
You know how much weight they're, we have in a, a dump? Ms. Banks asked earlier and I wasn't, I didn't know the, how much, do we have a couple tons?
You mean the, the capacity, like when we put salt on there? So yeah, if we have a, if we have a seven-yarder, cause we, we have, we had fives and we got rid of them. So seven and ten yarders, I mean, you can, yeah, you can go with eight, you could put eight tons of salt on there.
Okay. Do, do they have special engine, eh, certain caliber engine?
I mean, yeah, they're, they're, yeah, they do the turbos, you know, so they have turbos. When you're fully loaded like that, you need that turbo to, to make that truck move.
Okay. Uh, the other question is, uh, how do you actually track engine hours?
There's a, when we plug in our scan tools, if we're, if we get a check engine light, Motor Pool has, you know, they have scan tools and, and they plug in and it, it, it reads engine hours.
Okay. Uh, the last question is, and I talked to, uh, this is to um, our fiscal director about this. It said it was going to the Motor Pool staff vehicle account. So I asked about that, that, that will be cleaned up. Uh, Austin mentioned to me that they're in the process of cleaning up the nomenclature of these accounts. Because when I saw staff vehicle, I said, I know, no one is taking home a dump truck.
You wouldn't want to.
So, but that, he did indicate that this will be cleaned up and that, that's part of his mission is to clean these uh account names up over a period of time, so, but it's the right account. So otherwise, it uh, I can see the need for this particular item and so I, I will be supportive of this.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, the truck you're talking about right now to get, to uh replace, they have uh steel frames or stainless?
No, the ones that we're replacing, well, there's three left that are the old style. Um, and, and, and we could only replace, you know, we only got our hands on two trucks.
Okay.
And they are staying, the ones that we're getting are staying, you know, or the ones that we could get are stainless. The ones that we're looking to auction are, are metal-based.
Okay, so, and you say that the frames are rotten out, that are rusting out? So they aren't gonna be able to carry the loads that uh, without caving in if you're not careful?
So, I mean, a concern for us is when, when we take the trucks out, um, when we bring them back, when the snow is done. We spend a ha- uh, you know, a half-day washing the trucks and cleaning them out. What we find is with the metal beds, the salt pile that, that we wash out, we grab with the loader and we put it right back in with our salt. Now it has, it has rust, it has metal pieces, if you will. You know, they're not rotted, they're, they're not driving down the road with holes in them, but they're, they're getting, you know, they're, they're moving in that direction. So the contaminated salt piles of when we dumped the, the trucks, now they're, they're contaminated with rust. And, and then we put it back in, you know, it's-
Well, the question that, that I have is, are these trucks gonna last until you can get the new ones? Cause you'll be down to nine trucks. If you only have eleven to start with, then if you, if these, you know-
To answer your question truthfully, we- To answer your question truthfully, we could, we could make them last, you know, but they could have, they could also, I could tell you that and they could have, they could have failures. And then, you know, then, then what I just said to you wouldn't be a true statement.
Yeah, well, um, it seems to me that the prudent way to do it is to get in a, in a, uh, get them replaced as quickly as possible. So you don't run into a situation where we have a heavy snow, but we can't cover the routes because we don't have enough trucks to do it safely.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, when I was a worker, I prided myself into coming in and making the streets clear. And, and if I don't have the trucks, that, that becomes a thing.
Yeah, I'm sure there are two or three other reasons, but that's one of the reasons for your supervision.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, I, it's, it's, um, having nine routes, you know, there was a time when, when I started with the city. Um, we had eleven routes. And, and because of, you know, because of, of short staff and stuff like that, we, we moved it to nine. And, and, and nine's doable. Plus, when we had eleven routes, we had eleven trucks. If you had one down, then, you know, then what do you do? So, so the nine made more sense to, to take the, um, the other two routes and, and cut them up and, and, and piecemeal them and, you know, and do it that way. But it's concerning. You know, like I said, the turbo, um, uh, turbo on one of the, one of the dump trucks went and that's, you, you could have never, you know, saw it coming. And here we are and it's.
Sure.
It's all tore apart right now and it's, it's not helping, it's not helping me if it snows.
Right. Yeah, it's, by looking at the data and the comparison, it's pretty obvious that we're working our equipment a lot harder than either Troy or Farmington Hills. So, uh, we're getting a, we're getting our dollars worth.
I, yeah, I mean, I think so. And, and what would I do with, you know, if I had the extra trucks? Fantastic. But what do I do with them, right? Our, our building is to capacity right now with, you know, with the vehicles we have.
Yeah. Okay. That's my question.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, one last question. Why do we use our dump trucks, um, for towing the trailers in the summer versus, um, pickup trucks, like a three fifty?
You couldn't, you could never pull too big, our, our commercial mowers that we build are really big.
And there is no pickup trucks that can pull those?
No.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, we have, so we have, um, we have one example of a, a mower that we have. It barely fits on the trailer and it's, it's for hills. It's, it's really wide. I'm sure you've seen them on the, on the freeways. They're called slope masters and they're cut quicks. And it barely fits on the trailer. It's that big.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, are we prepared to vote?
Madam Chair, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of two, two thousand twenty-three freight line of dump trucks for the, uh, street and highway division.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier for the authorization to purchase the dump trucks for streets and highway as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Call him back tomorrow morning and say it went positive.
I, I appreciate you guys listening to me ramble on about it. I, I think I, you know, I'm, well, you can see I'm passionate about it if, if I'm doing a job and I have the equipment. Makes it a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the Replace City Institutional Network, INET.
Madam President, Renee Hannah-Hosa, our Director of IT, is here, uh, to, to a, a, address this item. Thank you.
Madam President, Counsel, um, during the construction of our INET, we identified some, uh, in, insufficient redundancies in the system. And we went back with the vendor and we discussed it. And they proposed, uh, three solutions to keep the costs down and to make the system, uh, resilient. So we took the three solutions and we looked at them and we had a third party evaluate which solution was gonna be the best solution. And we came up with a, a, a solution which is going to require an additional three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for additional, uh, construction and, uh, equipment costs. So one time, uh, charge for that. And then it's going to be a, an additional thirty-two hundred dollars per month on that.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Counsel, do you have any questions?
All right, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, approve the change order in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars with subsequent annual cost of ninety-three thousand six hundred dollars with Crown Castle Fiber LLC of Troy.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell for the approval of the, uh, to replace the city's institutional network, INET, as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the presentation and discussion regarding the special use request for Eagle Alliance LLC located at two eight five nine five Northwestern Highway on the south side of Northwestern Highway between Twelve Mile and Franklin Road. P L S U twenty-one dash zero 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 nine.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we did most of my introduction. Thank you. But, um, this is a special land use request to allow the tenant to be used as a restaurant with a bar. Uh, existing zoning is B one, uh, neighborhood business. This is the location of the, uh, site. Uh, the applicant will be, um, backfilling the former Leo's Coney Island with, uh, daiquiri and wing concept. New, um, bar restaurant, current zoning is neighborhood business, future land use zone is consistent. These are the floor plans and concept of the layout for the new store, restaurant. Um, basically it's the bar component, uh, that requires a special land use approval. There are no changes, um, to the exterior site at all. It's just the special land use and it is for discussion purposes only. I believe Mr. Mims is here with, uh, his associate. If you would like to say a few words at the podium and between the two of us, we'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
All right, good evening. Counsel, yes, uh, we are basically opening up a, um, franchise which is based out of Memphis, Tennessee. Um, it's a Debo's, uh, wings. And, um, it's a concept that basically encompasses wings, seafood, um, daiquiris, um, it's part of the product mix. So we're looking forward to bringing that up here to Southfield. Um, being in our backyard, uh, most of us that are involved in it, uh, graduated from Southfield High School. So we're kinda coming back home, Blue Jays. And, um, myself, I'm a Southfield resident as well. So I'm looking forward to, uh, um, opening this up in, in our backyard. So we're also gonna be opening, uh, one in Grand Rapids as well as Lansing if, uh, all goes well. So, um, some other sites that they're opening up is Chicago, um, Atlanta, and I believe Boston, um, as far as the franchise. So we'll be the first one outside of Tennessee. So all our eyes are on us in terms of the franchise. So looking forward to it.
Well, thank you for thinking of Southfield to return home.
Yeah.
Counsel, did we have any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
Um, it, 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 first of all, welcome back to Southfield. Um, you said your restaurant menu consists of wings and seafood? Um, what type of seafood?
Uh, we'll have, uh, crab, crab legs. Uh, I hope you guys aren't hungry. So, uh, crab legs, we'll have catfish. Uh, we'll also have, uh, the small lobster tails. Um, so they'll all be part of the, the product mix.
So this will be, um, a, a dinner restaurant or lunch and dinner?
It'll be lunch and dinner primarily in Memphis. They, they strived on more carryout. Um, and we're kinda bringing in the carryout, uh, mix with the interior, with the bar. Uh, because we'll be doing the daiquiris in, uh, Michigan, we can't do the carryout with the daiquiri. So we pretty much had to do some adjusting on what their current business model is. But, um, so primarily be mo- mostly carryout type food.
Are you, or do you presently have a liquor license?
Right now we are, we've purchased a liquor license and we're going through the process, uh, right now. I think the fire marshal, um, has, he's going through his final checks. Um, so we should hopefully have that, that cleared up soon. Um, and we're all clear with the state in terms of, um, their investigations and things like that. So.
Wonderful. I'm glad to see that you've secured the, um, liquor license. So looking forward to, um, this development that goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Cyver?
Yes, uh, you're gonna have a full-service bar?
Yes, yes, sir.
And you don't have a, uh, drive-through window?
No, we do not.
Okay. Um, and when do you, um, plan to open?
Uh, we're, we're gonna open up, uh, November first of, uh, this past year. So we've, we've missed that date. So we're now, we're looking at probably the end of February to be realistic. Right. And then we're running into some COVID issues in terms of contractors. And so, you know, the, the challenge of opening up in this environment is we're feeling it. Um, when you mentioned the chip shortages, I mean, we couldn't get fryers and our, our daiquiri machines are driven through chips. So we're having issues all around with that. So, uh, so we're looking at the end of February.
Well, uh, welcome. Glad you picked Southfield.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Brightwell?
We need, uh, more sit-down restaurants.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, um, I'm glad that you're coming back to Southfield. I think this is the ideal, uh, location for you. And, um, and I feel very comfortable that the city of Southfield and the surrounding areas would be a hundred percent supportive of your, um, your, your venture. So it'd be, I think it's a win-win. And I look forward to, um, voting on this. And we'll, we'll have it come back to us, uh, as soon as possible. They said the thirty-first. So, so you can ask and get, uh, get to moving.
Thank you, Counsel.
Councilwoman Banks?
Is there any way, since you are at the corner, I'm, I'm very familiar with that location. Used to frequent that restaurant. I'm sorry to see them closed. Can you add a, um, a carryout? Or a, 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 um, like a drive-through? Drive-through?
No, we're, we're bound by the, uh, contract with, uh, Leo, I'm sorry, with Tim Hortons. So they've kind of bound that area. They're the only drive-through in the, in that building. So.
Wait a minute, Tim Hortons, isn't this where the Leo's Coney Island is?
Right.
There's a Tim Hortons at the other end?
Yeah, they're on the other side. So.
Oh, I guess I missed that one.
It's on the left side.
Has it always been there? Really? Wow, okay. I thought Tim Hortons was further down.
So no Donuts or drive-throughs. That's our.
Wow, sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, you didn't make me hungry, but you did make me thirsty. But, uh, it sounds like a good plan. It sounds like, uh, like as the mayor mentioned, we could definitely use more sit-down restaurants. And it's, it sounds like something exciting that hasn't really, that you're bringing from, from down south. So it sounds, it sounds exciting. And I'm, I'm excited for it to come back, um, for the final review.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, you, when you made your presentation, you said that was, uh, the drinks daiquiri is one of your, uh, primary ones. Is it a full bar or is it just a limited bar?
It's gonna be a full bar.
A full bar?
Full bar, yep. And then, uh, we'll have, uh, maybe six or seven daiquiri machines kind of as a showcase in the, in the back of the bar.
And who would your primary clientele be that you're shooting at? What age, age range?
We're, that's a good question. I think it, different times of the day, we'll probably have different clientele. I'm as, I'm assuming in the, the daytime, we'll have more of a lunch crowd. In the evening, we may have more of a, uh, younger crowd, um, uh, looking to come out for drinks and sit down. So no particular demographic, uh, that we're trying to limit, but.
Okay. Um.
So younger crowds like my age, right?
Of course.
I'll be there. You got, you had me at wings.
Yeah, one of, one of the, uh, concerns that we've had in the past is when a new restaurant opens up here in Southfield, uh, it becomes a very popular gathering place. And sometimes the crowds get fairly unruly. And we've had a lot of police runs to some of the, some of the places. What, uh, in your plan, what kind of, uh, security do you have?
Um, we'll basically a, adjust obviously according to who actually supports us the most. That's really what it comes down to. Um, but we'll try to limit any kind of unruly type crowds with music. We'll, we'll keep it more of a, a blues, uh, Memphis-based music as kind of, we can keep it, you know, kind of not unruly. Um, we also have security company that we already are in contact with if we need to have someone there to check IDs and things like that. Um, and kind of drive around and make sure the perimeter is safe. So we do have a, a, a plan in place. Um, you know, if we just happen to explode in terms of, uh, popularity, um, which is a good and bad problem to have, obviously. But we, we do have plans to mitigate it.
Okay, um, and your music, is that pre-recorded or is it gonna be live music?
It's gonna be pre-recorded. It's gonna be piped in.
Okay. Right?
If, if I could through the chair, I, I know our police department and our chief and our community police and be happy to meet with you on reviewing security.
Oh, great.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Thank you. M- Mayor?
Uh, one other question. Hours of operation?
Uh, we're going for eleven to two, two AM.
Okay.
Any other questions for discussion tonight? Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Uh, refer to the planner for next steps?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be returning at the end of the month for their public hearing.
Thank you.
If I may, through the chair.
Our next, our next item for discussion?
Is a presentation and discussion regarding special use request of Taste of Ethiopia located at two eight six three nine Northwestern Highway on the south side of Northwestern Highway between Twelve Mile Road and Franklin Road. P S L U twenty-one dash zero zero one zero. And again, this is only for discussion purposes tonight. Um, The Taste of Ethiopia is an existing restaurant located, uh, at the end of the shopping center. They are taking the adjoining vacant space. They currently have a liquor license to, to, to provide liquor at the table, but they would also like to add a bar restaurant concept. Uh, we do have the owner, um, Ms. Maskey and her architect here available. If you wanna come up. Um, I'll take you through. Again, um, zoning is appropriate. This is the floor plan. On the left is the existing layout. On the right in gray is their expanded area. And, um, again, this is a special land use only dealing with the bar, that physical bar and liquor sales. There are no, uh, exterior changes proposed. With that, if you would like to introduce yourself and talk a little bit about your business and your business plan, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, um, Chairman, the mayor and the council. Oh, okay. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you again for everybody. I'm not new to the Southfield. Definitely, I've been in the business for sixteen years. Uh, Taste of Ethiopia bringing a flavor to the city. And I've been involved in any event that's happening in the city. And I was supported by the city. And with, that's what I survived. Um, all this bad timing and hopefully I'm growing. And, uh, it happened to be there is an aufo- opportunity that next to me, the building was, uh, vacant. So I decided to add to that one and to grow.
Thank you. Uh, I've visited your restaurant several times and I was here when you came before us before, so I'm glad business is good and you're still here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I remember the mayor when he was council, when I was applying for the liquor license.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Do we have any questions? Councilman Frazier?
Yes, do you have room inside to uh, uh, build your bar without uh taking away from your uh restaurant?
Yes.
Okay. Guess that was a.
Again, through, through the chair, Mr. Frazier, they're, they're taking over the empty um retail space adjacent to them. So the expen- the, the area in gray is gonna be their expanded area.
She's enlarging?
Yes.
Her footprint?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, are you the, the, and excuse me because I'm not much of a night owl, but uh, are you the same one that started at twelve and a half mile in Southfield?
Pardon me?
The restaurant, did you start your restaurant years ago in uh the?
Yes, inside the Southfield Plaza, yes.
Is that same one?
Southfield Plaza, I started there in two thousand five, and then I moved two thousand sixteen under where I am right now.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, uh, Councilman Frazier, what was your first question?
Pardon?
What was your first question?
Did she start her restaurant at twelve and a half mile in Southfield Road in that shopping center?
No, before that, that.
But the, the very first restaurant she had.
Through the chair to Mr. Hoskin, Councilman Hoskins. We were asking about, did he have room to expand?
Hold it, that question.
And, and again, if you look up on the screen, the area in gray is the vacant storefront adjacent to them. So they'd be expanding into that area.
Okay, and uh, your, your, your current liquor license, it'll still apply for you to do uh sales at the bar as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a Class C.
All right, thank you. Those are the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, you may have just answered the question um that I was gonna ask. You, you said you were applying for a license or do you have a, like, do you presently have a license?
I have for the past ten years. I have the license.
And you, have you served liquor at that location?
Where I am right now?
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
I guess I must have missed it. Okay, thank you.
So, so again, to Ms. Banks, the, they currently serve like at the table drinks, but they want, they want to add the physical bar, and that's what's triggering the special land use.
Okay, and I'm glad to see you're still in Southfield. I remember when you first came before this honorable body and you started in that little tiny um restaurant and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
For a point of uh order, um, Taste of Ethiopia got the last city liquor license.
Oh.
Okay, you're right.
In two thousand five.
You're right, I remember now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, this, this question is really more for, for Planner Crowe. Um, this is the second one we've had tonight where we're doing a special use, special land use to have a bar, rather than just uh liquor at a table. Is this something that we should look at in our codes to change? Or is this an appropriate way to keep the codes, but just keep doing these special land uses?
Um, in this particular case, because of some un- potentially unintended consequences, if you go into a restaurant and you have sit-down and someone brings you a bottle of beer, waitress, waitress, that's a different atmosphere than having a physical bar where, you know, again, some of the problems that we alluded to earlier potentially can, can creep up. And so I think it's the um, it's both the, the function and, and, and the potential layout and use that uh our forefathers, you know, built into the zoning ordinance to just have that extra layer of protection. This way, the public is notified and has an ability to comment on it, adjacent property owners have the ability to comment on it. And I, I do think it's inappropriate uh to have this as a, an extra layer of review than just a standard restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, saying none, uh Planner Crowe, our next steps?
Again, this will come back later in the month for a public hearing.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, counsel. Our next item for discussion is the site plan review request for Joe Richardson.
Yes, thank you, um, Madam Chair. This is again just a presentation and discussion regarding site plan review requests of Joe Richardson on behalf of Habitat for Humanity Oakland for property located on the north side of Westland between Evergreen and Prescott. If counsel um recalls as I go through this, the um properties that are indicated on uh the area were before you last year for rezoning from single-family to RT attached, single-family uh as a precursor to the, the potential for redevelopment on vacant and underutilized sites in this neighborhood. So um, tonight, this is ultimately gonna be just a straight site plan, no public hearing. It's a review for a construction of a two thousand three hundred and eighty-eight square foot duplex. It's only the um, the first of a possibly eight duplex, or eight units or four duplexes. Property is located on the north side of Westland. This is the uh potential layout. And again, you can see the existing single-family units to the, to the right and left of the screen. So we've been conscious to try to right-size the, the layout and the scale of these new duplexes so they don't encroach in front of the existing single-family. Uh, this is the uh, some details of each of the units. They'll be side-by-side with separate driveway and garage. And then uh, this is the um, it's a little sensitive here. Rendering, um, handsome rendering of the duplexes, elevations, the floor plan. And then um, I'd like to turn it over to the developers to talk a little bit about the project and where you are, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. If you could introduce yourself, please.
I'm Joe Richardson, project manager for Habitat for Humanity. Yeah, we're currently working on this project, um, trying to do an all-electric home. It uh is gonna be slab-on-grade, um, roughly a thousand square feet on each side. We've been requested to uh put a sidewalk across the front of it. It'll be the first one in that neighborhood to get your sidewalk program going. And we're just anxious to get it going, to be honest with you.
Okay. Uh, counsel, Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, uh, what is the um potential, what the market value for these uh units?
The market value is gonna be around four hundred.
Four hundred?
That's the cost. Uh, the, the market value cost to construct is approximately four hundred. The reset, when we go to sell it for the, the, the end buyer will pay appraised value for what the market, uh, you know, will bear at the time. Right now, we're projecting that out to be uh in the range of a hundred and sixty-five to a hundred and seventy-five thousand uh based on some single-family dwellings we've done in the area this past year.
Okay, all right, um. So, and I know our assessor's not here, but um. Okay, you, did you say a hundred and seventy-five per unit theoretically, the selling price?
A hundred and sixty-five to a hundred and seventy-five is what we're projecting right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
So based on that, you're taking a loss?
That's correct, as we do with majority of our projects in the city of Southfield.
All right, and, and will these homes be, be um eligible for Habitat clients?
That would be the intent, would be home buyers through the Habitat uh homebuyer program.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, um, now, you'll have two different uh families or, I mean, one person couldn't own both, both halves? Is that where, is that, I mean, that's.
Yes.
What I understand, the Habitat for Humanity. And it's built on a slab, is it?
Yes, it'd be a frost-protected.
Cause I looked at the floor plan, didn't look like there were any steps anyplace.
Slab-on-grade, frost, frost-protected uh slab-on-grade.
Okay, and uh, it looked like it was pretty full when you uh designed the rooms and stuff. Where would the heating and, and all, would that be in a garage?
Uh, yes.
Furnace and hot water heater and all that?
Sure, so, so the homes aren't designed to have a forced air furnace as you're traditionally used to seeing. Uh, they're designed to have a electric heat pump, uh often referred to as a mini-split.
Uh, could you speak a little louder, please?
Yes, uh, so the homes are designed to have a uh heat pump system to both cool and heat the home. It's an all-electric home design so that uh there is no gas being used at the home, no traditional forced air unit like you're used to seeing. Also, a tankless water heater will be utilized, which uh is a little different than your typical water heater. Uh, hangs on a wall, very uh tight and compact. The uh heating system's outside like your air conditioner unit would be. Um, much smaller though than what a air condenser, uh, air conditioning condenser is. A lot of new technologies being brought into this uh, this project uh in conjunction with a partnership with um TTE Energy.
Well, I certainly hope that uh, be- being an all-electric home, that uh it's well insulated and, and also that the cost of heating and cooling is within the budget of the people that are gonna be living in there.
Yeah, that's a great question or comment. Uh, to respond to that, um, we uh typically a cold bi- a code-built home, if you're familiar with hers ratings, uh, a typical code is one hundred. Uh, this home's projected to come in at forty. And so what that means is it's substantial, it'll take substantially less energy to uh utilize to heat and cool the home than a code-built home would. Um, our last home averaged about thirty dollars a month uh year-round.
How much?
Thirty.
That's what I thought you said. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Is there any way to set the house back a little bit further so there's more room in the driveway? Presently, because of the sidewalk, can you even fit, um, example, a pickup truck in the driveway? From this rendering, it doesn't look like it's very long.
Uh, Terry, could, could you have the dimension there? I, I'm, I believe it's a, uh, the driveway is approximately thirty-five feet, is that correct, Terry?
What'd you just think it was?
Thirty-five, somewhere in there. The distance from the garage door to the.
Yeah, there's um, there's uh forty feet of driveway. And again, a car stall is typically eighteen to twenty feet in depth. There also is a one-car garage, um, storage inside. Uh, we, our bike rack is still required and we, we worked with them to actually have uh hangers inside the garage to store bikes. And if you get, if you think about, I was just doing some math here and Mr. Zorn will tell you, you know, two hundred dollars a square foot for construction is, you know, about the norm. They're doing this for about one, one-seventy-five a square foot and selling it at a loss. And so um, they're trying to maximize the efficiency with construction and accessibility and weatherization. I wanted to point out that to reduce some of the square footage costs and to provide some extra storage, there are two smaller freestanding sheds located in the back to help with, you know, storage of tools and bikes and accessories. That will require a waiver. There's a slight waiver required for the side yard setback. And uh, there's, there, there're approximately fifty or sixty square feet below the minimum for that area. But the scale of the, the two units, as you see, is larger than most of the single families located there. And, and that's why we try to find a balance about uh locating the street line of the front of this building to be in line with the average of the existing homes. So this is an infill housing project. It's a Habitat for Humanity, trying to make it more affordable and using the best technologies and green infrastructure. Um, stated with the uh, the waterless heater and so forth. So we balanced all those things when we looked at, but certainly one to two cars can fit in those, the driveway, plus the, the parking space in the garage.
And I wasn't concerned about a car, I was questioning like a pickup truck. It looks like with the sidewalk there, the pickup truck's gonna be over the line, at which time it'll be a violation and you don't want people to get ticketed. It looked, did not look very big.
Ag- again, according to the drawings, it looks like there's forty feet from the front end of the building into the sidewalk.
So Nancy, if I, if I can, sorry, Councilman Banks, the, the picture they had up there did look like it wouldn't fit a pickup truck, but that's just an illustration. But this one shows that there is that forty feet. Guess I can, I'm, I, I. But I, I do, I, I understand what you're saying, that the, the, the drawing of the home looks like there's not enough room, but that's, it's not, it's not to scale.
The, the rendering is just for illustrative purposes, as far as the driveway's concerned.
I just don't want it to be similar to the complex across from Plum Hollow. It's, the driveways are gonna be a little bit larger than those, or is it similar?
Well, uh, I don't know what the, the standards are for there, but again, a typical car can fit in a twenty-foot-long stall. This is forty feet. So in theory, you could almost back two cars bumper-to-bumper and still not overhang the, the sidewalk. So it certainly should be large enough for a pickup truck.
And there's room on the street for additional parking if guests come over?
Well, I, again, I don't know what the um, the current, if there's no, any parking or no parking. We, we can find that out before uh we come, but this, this house is in line with uh existing single-family homes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, I do have one question. The backyard, is that, uh, does it have a fence down the center of the backyard or is it just one large backyard?
No, it's wide open.
Wide open?
Yeah.
These, these are gonna be condominiums, correct? So it's, the, the backyard and the common space are gonna be owned fifty percent.
Yeah, I just hope they're friends. Okay.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
You know, one of the things that um I hear occasionally are people are looking for uh sort of a mother-in-law suite. Um, you know, they're looking at, um, for instance, on the McKinley project, there are people that uh with those planned two-family uh homes that they wanted, um, one for themselves and one for uh elderly resident or elderly relative, rather. Uh, so that's, is that feasible for this? If they both qualified as a Habitat?
Certainly it would be.
Okay, I thought so.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, uh, Terry, this will come back to at the end of the month?
Yes, again, and, and it'll just be a straight site plan. And then if the counsel rec- or makes a conditional approval, they will be going to the ZBI for their three waivers shortly after. But we are, we are supportive of this project and we've talked about providing alternative types of housing. This certainly begins a trend of infill housing in areas that haven't been as stabilized as we'd like. And if this duplex is successful, they will be building three more duplexes to the south.
Okay, thank you.
I could also point out that this whole area west of Evergreen, the, we call them the West Streets, uh, north of Eight Mile, there are a lot of vacant lots uh in, in those four or five streets north of Eight Mile, so. there are a lot of vacant lots, uh, in, in those four or five streets north of Eight Mile, so... And it's been hard to get someone to build there because of, um, the cost of construction versus the value of the assessed value in the neighborhood. So, uh, this is a, a great project to do fill in, provide affordable housing with something that we need.
Thank you. Thank you. We look forward to you coming back.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item for presentation and discussion is the site plan review for the, uh, City of Southfield Parks and Rec, Miller Park.
Uh, yes, ma'am chair, I, I will be doing an introduction. Actually, we have two neighborhood parks. One is, um, Miller Park, the first one, and then we will be talking about Sims Park. The petitioners, OHM on behalf of the City of Southfield, Parks and Recreation Department. Miller Park is, you may be aware, is located on the south side of Webster between Rambling and Southfield Road. These are, um, site plan, review, renovations and alterations to the existing Miller Park to provide new pickleball, basketball courts and an asphalt trail around the existing ball field and some other accessory improvements. Uh, this is coming out of the master plan and public comments that we've been receiving about improving these facilities, especially the trails that are being added as, uh, in a very popular, safe alternative during COVID. Again, uh, existing facilities with two existing ball fields. I believe there's, uh, tennis courts, parking and a small play structure. This is, uh, what's being proposed is a conversion of the existing tennis courts into pickleball, basketball, and then a, a walking loop trail around, um, the two existing Little League ball fields. And with that, um, Ms. Fields is here and, and her consultants will dive in just a little bit deeper and happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Ms. Fields?
Thanks, Terry. I am joined by Chris Riggar. Good evening, council. Um, as you know, the priority importance of providing outdoor spaces for our residents is paramount right now. Um, investing and improving these spaces continues to be a priority for Parks and Recreation. Um, both of these projects, uh, are in concert, as Terry said, with our current master plan, but also we've heard a consistent, uh, communication from our residents, uh, during the engagement, community engagement process for the upcoming master plan as well. Um, Miller Park, uh, if you, if you remember, is, is, uh, behind, uh, Home Depot. Uh, so that's the park that's, that's getting the, uh, pickleball courts, the three-half, half-court basketball courts and the paved path. The paved path is about a third of a mile all the way around. Um, some of the feedback that we heard just in sharing and being transparent here, um, I received some phone calls. Uh, we had some communications, obviously, with the planning commission, um, and just, uh, uh, some, some folks who called in as well. A lot of, uh, focus was on a request for, uh, clear sightlines to the parks. Um, there was some requests for tree plantings for some aesthetics and for sound barriers, uh, but they wanted to make sure that we did not, um, block their view into the park. Um, for Miller Park, uh, one of the comments, uh, was brought up about the distance between the pathway and the back fence line of their property. Uh, we assured them that it was a ninety-foot distance, um, from the back of their fence to the beginning of the, of the path. Um, it is a paved path. Um, another comment that was made in regards to Miller Park was, um, putting, uh, parking blocks or bollards at the, the head of the trailhead uh, so that there was not an entrance there for any cars, um, at all to, to occupy that trail. Um, I wanna go over real quick, uh, the plantings. Um, oh, the other was, they wanted to make sure that we were not reserving any, uh, pavilions or shelters, uh, for reservations there at that park. Um, so we assured them that that was not, that was not happening either. Um, if it's okay, I'd like to move to Sims Park. Sims Park is the residential park as well. Um, we're having, uh, a tennis court and pickle, and, uh, painted lines for pickleball. So that can be either, that can be either one. That can be a, a tennis court or a pickleball court. Historically, that, that court itself was up on a berm. And so it was, it, the height was up and beyond, um, for instance, the playground. So if you were driving past that park, you really couldn't see into the park well. So we work with the police department. They are at our engagement meetings, our community engagement. They're part of our stakeholders, uh, meetings. And so always clear sightlines are of importance for the police department. So at Sims Park, what we did was we moved those courts, the beginning of those courts, back away from the road and leveled with the, with the ground. Um, there is a path there as well. It's about a quarter of a mile. Um, we are, uh, putting in the half-basketball courts, again, half-court. Um, one of our residents that I've talked to a couple of times, um, had some concern about those basketball courts uh, because of some experiences fifteen and twenty years ago. Um, he didn't feel that the communication was great. Um, he wondered, um, about, uh, gathering at that park. Um, so we talked about the communication with our police department, um, that we come to it with a team approach as well. Um, there was also a request for a drop-off area. There is not a parking lot at Sims. And so, um, the planning commission, um, in working with us, suggested that there be, uh, a drop-off area for folks so that it was accessible, um, and that there was actually a, a path, a rampway that went into the, that went into the park. Um... Again, clear sightlines, uh, were requested. Um, the unique part about this too, when we talk about pickleball courts and we talk about tennis courts, it really is taking a couple of different user groups and putting them in the same park. Um, we have had a request for outdoor pickleball courts for quite some time. We've got a strong contingency of folks who play indoors. Um, and so bringing, um, older adults, bringing adults into some of our parks where we also have kids playing is a little bit of peer, um, advocates there, uh, and so we're bringing both user groups. This also gives us an opportunity, whenever we invest in our parks, uh, it gives us an opportunity to take our programs to them. So you're familiar with our Recreation on the Move program, where we bring activities to folks in their communities, to their parks. So this allows us to be able to grow that initiative, um, in our parks. Um, and also, uh, and I, we've said this before, creating these safe outdoor spaces is so important right now. Um, we have, I can't tell you the amount of phone calls during the height of the pandemic, um, for both of those parks about basketball, um, and being able to take their kids out there and play. Um, lastly, from a financial end, so both these parks, I don't wanna get too far ahead, both these parks are between five hundred and six hundred thousand respectively. Um, Parks and Recreation, right now, as of June thirtieth, uh, we will be putting one point five million dollars back into our fund balance. Um, it's actually one million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars today. Um, that brings us to a total, uh, of five point four for Parks and Recreation's fund balance. Our administration has been working with, uh, Austin Michaels, our financial, uh, director, uh, confirming that these projects are in appropriate use of, of fund balance dollars. So, um, Parks and Recreation is looking forward to making these improvements. I can answer any questions that you might have. Chris is, is here, uh, with us from, uh, OHM, who may be able to answer any of your questions in regards to some of the illustrations. Um, but we're excited to be able to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Council? Do you have any questions? Councilman Frazier?
Yes, uh, on the, uh, uh, pickleball slash basketball, are those two events on the same spot, physically spot?
Uh, great question, and I might have, I might have confused a little bit. So at Sims, they're separate spots. So at Miller Park, um, we have four pickleball courts and three half-court basketball courts. At Sims Park, we have a tennis court that is also going to have painted lines so that pickleball can play there as well. So either-or user can use that, and then next to that will be the three half-court basketball courts, just like at Miller Park.
Okay, and, in the, the park that shares the tennis court and pickleball, how will that work without conflict if, you know, a, a group of people are playing? They play pickleball every Thursday afternoon and one Thursday afternoon, somebody wants to play tennis. How do, how does that?
Well, we're not reserving those courts, so that, that's going to be the users', uh, that's going to be the users' challenge, if you will, is finding time so that when they wanna play tennis, there's a tennis court available. Um, so you can't use it at the same time. You don't have to change anything about it. Um, but, uh, we're just making it appropriate for either-or. So if we don't have very many tennis players over by Sims Park, but boy, they really wanna play pickleball, there's, there's a facility there for that. Um, we, it's not our only park with tennis courts. So it was really important that we allow that opportunity for Sims. We're gonna get feedback more and more, I would imagine. Um, we might have a, a request for, for more pickleball courts within the city, but tho- that was a place where we wanted to introduce it. Uh, we wanted to be able to offer both those activities. Um, and then having those four pickleball courts at Miller Park, that allows us not only to introduce it, but we're also able to have some tournaments out there. So I think that us being able to give a good picture in our park system as we make these improvements is that if you can't find an open tennis court at, say, here at Civic's Civic Center, you can go play over at Sims Park, or you can play at Beechwood. So we're really trying to have a really good inventory, um, of parks, but I understand what you're saying. That, that happens here at the, at the Civic Center. People wanna play tennis and those tennis courts are, are filled up. Um, so it's finding some times to do that. Right now, we're not reserving it. We may find, we may find in the future that that might be something that Parks and Recreation looks into, is reserving tennis courts, but right now, it hasn't been a need.
Well, one of the, uh, you know, it might be good news, bad news, but, uh, it's almost good news that there will be more than enough, more people wanting to use the facilities than they just set their vacant and nobody, nobody comes to the park to, to use it. But, uh, I can imagine a bunch of seniors that, s- every Thursday afternoon, they all get there to, to play pickleball and one day, you know, somebody else is, uh, playing tennis and they're saying, "This is our, you know, this is our time to play pickleball."
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and we find that, you know, sometimes we have to reserve, for instance, our tennis courts. I know that we do, uh, a program, and I can't remember who it's with in the summertime. The mayor usually is part of that request, but they will ask us to book our tennis courts here at Civic Center to be a backup, I think it's Franklin, isn't it Franklin Athletic Club? They run a huge tournament, and so they need a space that they can guarantee that they have some open courts for consolation rounds. And so we, 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 we present that to public ahead of time, so we do two weeks ahead and say, "These courts will be reserved for this particular event on this particular day," and we give the public some notice. So, um, there, there's no telling the requests that we may get going forward for just such a situation like that. "Listen, we're in the Sims Park area. Uh, is there any way that we can reserve a court?" Um, but that's a great problem to have, just as you said.
But I wanna give you kudos for thinking ahead and doing some things that, uh, make our parks more usable and usable-friendly for all ages.
For all ages.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, uh, excellent presentation. Uh, Ms. Field, uh, you might have answered this, uh, if I missed it. Have, has the study been done with respect to the usage of all our parks? What, do you have a quantity? Can we quantify the usage of our parks?
You know, we don't have those particular numbers. Um, we, we can go by what we do for our maintenance for those parks, so we can tell by usage, for instance, for, for the easy ones, right? Uh, Pebble Creek, um, Inglewood, um, Beechwoods, where we have those shelter rentals. We know how many folks are coming in there. But we don't have a, a, um, a participant ticker, if you will, of people coming in and out of those parks. But through our presence in the parks, like I said, those maintenance folks, we're able to talk about a, a, a general, um, idea of how many people are, are there. Like with Inglewood Park, we probably have about four hundred people in the morning, um, on weekends, walking that trail. Um, so as far as, as finite numbers, no. Um, we know as a profession that park usage increased four hundred percent in the last year and a half. Um, that is a national number that is used across the board, so that's probably where you've heard us talk about usage in, in, in parks going up. But as far as us having numbers, we're not like the county parks where they have people who pay to get in the parks and so that, that, that number is documented every single day. We had that at the pool. We had that at the ice arena, where we have staff that can monitor that. But as far as our, our finite numbers, no, we don't. We know which parks are busy. Uh, we know which parks has a lot of, you can go to our twelve parks that have playgrounds and you will find, of course, numbers higher. Um, but you will also go into places like Verbarry Woods and Barvik and find walkers there as well. Not to that level of number, but just as important to each and every one of them that use that park.
Okay, all right, well, good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Yes, um, Ms. Fields, with, uh, both of these presentations with the parks, I think they're both excellent ideas. You know, you and I have had conversations about, um, reinventing many of the parks, uh, throughout the city, and I think that this is a, a great step in the right direction. Basketball courts are desperately needed in different areas of the city, and, uh, I, I'm excited to, to see these plans move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Uh, to Ms. Parks as well, having a young family here in Southfield, I'm excited about the basketball courts. Uh, I have a son that's soon to be nine. Over the summer, we had to go to Oak Park to just play basketball in a capacity, so I'm excited. And we always talk about having things to do for young families here with younger children. So, uh, Councilman Mandelbaum and I both have young children and young families, so we may be a little bit more excited than others, but definitely our peers who, who have young families, um, they are excited about this opportunity. So I highly respect your vision and, uh, the things that you're putting in place for young families and families of, of all uh, here in Southfield, but particularly the attention to some of the things that council has requested in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't say enough about the folks that are to my left here. One of them, um, OHM and Chris Riggar, he has, uh, he's really come to the table and, and, and we've really talked a great deal about the, the comments from this particular council, councils of the past is, is, uh, Clerk Hawkins had suggested, councils from the past, and our planning commission. We were very excited and got really good feedback from the planning commission as well, through their experience and through what they have heard from our residents. So we're really looking forward to being able to move this forward. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And both of these parks are in my backyard, so I'm familiar with both.
Sure.
Uh, and I had asked at the president's meeting about the, uh, games. I know that there's a lot of baseball games that's there.
Mm-hmm.
Those are scheduled though, aren't they? So do you have control? Cause there's, uh, there's a large parking lot at, uh, Miller Park, I believe. It's Miller, on Webster.
Sure.
But, uh, there could be at some point a lot of traffic on Webster, and that is a through street. So do you have, or have you studied traffic at all with the additional basketball and pickleball and all of the? Cause I know during the day, it probably won't, uh, regarding, uh, pickleball, because a lot of the seniors may come during the day. But there's some that come in the evening because we work.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and they wanna have a place to park, which there's plenty of parking, but there's also during the summer months, there's games.
Yes.
Um, that takes place.
Yeah, we, we work with, um, the, one of the, actually, there's a couple baseball leagues. The Southfield Baseball Youth League has, has waned over the years and it has struggled a bit. They partnered with Ferndale and, and Oak Park and have tried to bring that to fruition, uh, but the numbers they're struggling with. Um, but they do use Miller Park from time to time. Um, and Sims Park, there's a baseball diamond there as well. Um, the youth baseball league used to use that baseball field. Um, they have not for years. So, um, that's, that's another part of that park that we're going to be addressing. The, the grass there, um, Sims Park was a spot for a construction area a year or two ago. And so we've got some grass there that needs to be replenished. So the, we didn't want to touch that baseball diamond. So again, we're not just looking at what we have in front of us right now, but we're looking for future. So a lot of times it's not a baseball league necessarily, necessarily that wants to use that, but a family or a church that wants to be able to have a ball diamond that is safe. Um, and so we see Sims as, as an opportunity there. Um, Miller Park, we do know when folks, most of the time. Now, I can't tell you, everybody says, hey, can we use that ball diamond? Sometimes they just show. Um, but for the most part, if someone wants to guarantee usage at one of our parks, they respectfully request that with us. Um, but we've had the same kind of conversations, um, with some of the residents near Miller Park. Nice part about that too, it is a walkable, there's a lot of houses back there. At both of these parks, you'll see bike racks. We're using these two parks to sort of like a flagship signature as we go forward. You know, that we've got a logo that we have rolled out that's new for Parks and Recreation. Well, we're going to address the signage at both these parks too. So we've been working with OHM and looking at a rebranding. Um, a lot of our parks have not had that kind of attention paid to signage. So you see, don't do this, don't do that, don't do this, please don't do that. No one wants to be screamed at when they come into our parks. We just want folks to be able to use our parks in a respectful way. And so having some brand new signage that lets them know what, you know, what's okay and what's, what we would like them to, to stay away from or refrain from, that's going to be a welcome, that's not going to be shouting, shouting signs. So part of that management of how people use our parks and when they use them will be illustrated on our new signage as well, so, thank you.
Thank you for that. And I don't know if you mentioned, or I don't remember if you mentioned about the partnership with the police department as well, because the other concern was after dark. A lot of things still continue to happen in our parks. And I know that Parks and Rec have been working very diligently with the police department to monitor those parks, even if it's just have someone drive through on a regular basis just to ensure that there's no cars out there or things going on that shouldn't.
Thank you, I appreciate you bringing that up. Yes, they, they are, they are definitely a partner at the table. Uh, not only in our events as we go forward, right, uh, whether we're partnering. Um, but also w- w- we want to be able to talk to not just the council and the planning commission, but those folks who are called to the table to help us when we have an issue. We're not about being reactive, so we do as much proactive work as we can. And so when you hear us, we go before Terry, uh, and planning and work with them about those capital improvements every year, those five-year projects. How we base, how we move forward is on safety. So as we invest in these parks, it's so important that we think proactively about just what you're talking about. So those sightlines that the police department talked about, lighting, um, and being able to have really good signage in those parks is just one of the ways, a couple of the ways that we can, uh, really make it safe and comfortable for folks that want to be there. We're going to have walking paths there, right? So we want to be able to feel safe when we're walking through there. So I appreciate that.
And, and in addition to that, with the walking paths, the other thing that I really wanted to, uh, have you, to let all the residents know, because we get a lot of questions, is about the porta-johns.
Yes.
People walk, and when you walk in the back, uh, some of the residents have complained that people actually have relieved themselves in the back. And of course, their backyard is right there and it causes a, an odor that is unpleasant. So, uh, I know this year, last year, I'm sorry, 2021, there were porta-johns available.
Yes.
At those parks, so will that continue?
We will, we will continue that. And for, um, those who have participated, even past that season where we close our, our flush toilets down, um, here on campus, you know, that usually happens in November. Well, we can still have warm days in November, so we've got tennis players out there. So ever since, uh, COVID, uh, we have added a season, if you will, of porta-potties. So after we shut down our bathrooms, boy, people still want to be outdoors. It's still nice, but they have to have a place to, to go to the bathroom. So we had, uh, extended that, that opening for folks to be able to use. And that will be at, at those parks as well. And our, our maintenance staff, our park, uh, maintenance staff that is tremendous about getting out to those parks, clean those, uh, porta-potties daily, so.
Thank you. And I noticed this year, and then I'm gonna go to someone, that i- in, in addition to the porta-johns, there was also sanit- hand sanitizer.
Yes.
For, because of COVID and stuff. And that was something that we didn't have before. So thank you for paying attention and adding those things.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Seiver?
Yeah, I, I continue to express my concern about particularly in Sims Park, uh, after-hours activity, uh, as the houses are very close, uh, to, uh, these proposed improvements. But the other thing I wanted to mention, uh, too, is, uh, have you checked, um, and I don't know the, I can't recall the current status, but there are, there were no parking, eight to five signs on Pierce and Glasgow. So you may want to look into that.
Sure.
If, you know, uh, again, some people want to drive there, uh, to, to play, uh, use the facility. Uh, I'm not sure about the, um, current status of the parking. Uh, we had another situation where those signs went up, uh, because of parking in the neighborhood.
Sure, we'll take a look at that, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. This was a healthy discussion, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This will be brought back, or?
Yes, so, um, both of these will be brought back, um, for site plan review consideration. And, uh, I just do want to, uh, just take a moment and, and say that I think both of these neighborhood-based parks tick a lot of boxes. They're much more accessible, uh, they're designed to be multi-generational and inclusive. They incorporate both passive and active activities. The way they're designed allows for natural surveillance, so more eyes on. So I think that will help with the safety concerns. And, you know, my 11-plus years here, I constantly hear the need for basketball courts, so it also checks that box off too. And we're fully supportive of both of these, um, plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, council, our next item is the Civic Center lawn study.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I, I just, uh, comment on the previous presentation. The, the last, uh, nine months, Parks and Rec has been redoing their master plan. Um, many of you are aware that we're looking at how we're going to spend our recovery dollars. Across the, uh, county, there's opportunities coming at us. And this item is generated by an item that has come from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and, and a program that's called, um, uh, revitalization and placemaking, a RAP program. I, the city's front yard has been used as a place of engagement, place for making, placemaking. Large events have been gathering on our event for a number of years. And what we have in front of us is one of those grant opportunities. And I believe that over the next nine months, we're going to see an avalanche of these types of funding opportunities come our way. Uh, and as much as the master plan that Parks and Rec was driven by, the governor's announcement of 150 million dollars to be made available as, as an opportunity, uh, for the city to secure money, we now have a funding, a way to secure and apply for a grant opportunity that on preliminary inter, um, evaluation, we believe the city has an excellent opportunity to submit a grant. Prior to this grant, our, our city center, headed by our, our city planner, uh, Terry Crowe, Parks and Rec under the leadership of our Parks and Rec Director, Terry Fields, and then our library under the direction of our acting library, have been in communication about what we can do on this front, uh, yard pool. So, uh, end of December, we knew the state of Michigan was talking about, um, this RAP program, they had not titled it. We know that, uh, the program has been announced. At some point in the next 90 days, the state of Michigan will be soliciting applications for this, uh, program. Our evaluation indicates that the city of Southfield would be eligible for as much as a million dollars. There is a match. We are proposing that various entities in the city match. Those entities could be the city through its recovery dollars. Many of the activities identified by our sta- staff pertain to Parks and Rec activities. Parks and Rec could be one of our funding sources, as well as the library and the city center. So this evening, we have a proposal, uh, from us, from OHM to retain OHM to do a study to assist us with design concepts, uh, helping us prepare cost estimates to submit, uh, and in preparation to prepare a grant application to submit to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's RAP, um, program. I've asked, uh, Terry Fields, uh, Terry Crowe, uh, and, uh, Chris from OHM to be prepared to answer questions. We think this is an exciting opportunity. I cannot stress enough that I think this next nine, nine months, we're going to see a lot of opportunities to go after different monies that we haven't had in a pa- in, in, in the past. Um, the planning that this council has done in, uh, positioning the city to complete this Parks and Rec plan opens the, these doors for these things to happen. What we've been doing in our economic development, the city, the city center, our downtown, what we've done at Northland, these placemaking elements are very much what we hear repeatedly, we need to do as a community and Michigan needs to do as a state to better compete, uh, against other parts of the country. So, uh, Madam President, we'll do our best to field, uh, questions. We are asking for a resolution to authorize the city to retain OHM to, uh, assist us in preparing, uh, a grant application, primarily with design and cost estimates. The, uh, item and the proposal was shared with the full council. It is a menu. As we go through this process, um, with the state, as more questions get answered about the grant, we'll have a better idea of what it is we will need to present to the state. But we wanted to write that initial proposal in a menu format so that if my Parks and Rec, my city center and the library field, we need a broader proposal, we could pull down from that menu. Thank you.
Thank you. Planner Crowe?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just want to, um, piggyback to Mr. Zorn a little bit that, again, um, I believe when I first started here in 2010, the front lawn was to be looked at and not walked on. I think that was the sentiment of some previous councils. And around 2015, we, uh, started work on installing the front lawn loop in, uh, in preparation of Evergreen Road being re- rebranded, redesigned. Now in 2022, as you're aware, with the mixed-use development that's proposed across the street, we will be losing the programming space for the Eat to the Beat and other events. We purposely put the, um, mid-block crossing in with the future vision of connecting the municipal campus to any major redevelopment across the street. We have found that the front lawn loop has made the programming space much more accessible, but it still limits the ability to have major events, especially with, um, the drainage issues that, and challenges that exist. Uh, as you know, with the, um, Kimmy Horn Jazz Fest and many other big events that Parks and Rec puts on, we get upwards of 4,000 people. Uh, so our, our concept, working with, uh, the business community, the library and Parks and Rec, is to fully develop the front lawn, um, retain the, the green space and passiveness, but make it much more accessible and inclusive to the residents of the community, to our, our business partners and to visitors. And given what Mr. Zorn has said, this is unprecedented amount of potential dollars that we can bring into this community. In order for us to be positioned, we, we do need some assistance from outside help, um, to prepare preliminary concepts and preliminary cost estimates. And we believe with the short time span that OHM currently working on our master plan and doing some of our concepts can, can meet our, our, our tight timelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council, any questions? Councilman Hoskin?
Uh, uh, thank you. Um, uh, and thank you so much for that presentation. I'm ac- I'm actually very excited about this. I know that as we've been talking about, just as you pointed out, Mr. Crowe, as we've been talking about the development across the street, I know that I spoke with, uh, Mr. Juad about, um, one of my concerns when we were first talking about the development of that space was, um, the lack of, the lack of space, the lack of green space, the lack of activities in the first renderings that came out. Um, and I know he and I talked about at some point, hopefully doing something with the lawn, um, and making it all connect and making it so as that both the lawn and whatever the development ends up being across the street is something that is draw, uh, that draws people to the city. And so I'm, I'm really excited that we're working on something now. We have this opportunity to really do something with that lawn space. Um, I just want to make sure with the timelines, I see in the letter from, um, OHM that we're looking at the 14th is being done with everything, having like all the plans and concepts and stuff? March 14th, I should say.
If, if, if I could, um, as Mr. Zorn has stated, we anticipate MEDC releasing the grant application with, within the next one to two weeks. There's a 60-day review and submittal period, and then a 30-day, um, review after that. In order for us to be in position to do this and give the consultant time to, to vet this with various departments, it's, it's about a six-week process, and that's putting the metal to the pedal.
Mm-hmm.
That will get us conceptual, um, concept plans and estimates to start applying for grants. Then there, there may be at a later date, if the mo- the funding is identified, to do more detailed plans. Uh, that I would imagine this will be a multi-year, multi-phase project. But some of the things that need to be addressed immediately, irrigation system is so outdated, they don't even have parts for it anymore. We have severe flooding and, and ponding on the site because the majority of it is fill and clay and, and construction debris. And we want to make the space a lot more accessible. Those are our immediate needs. Then adding potentially a permanent, um, performing arts band shelter, providing other amenities on the site w- would come a little bit later. So the, um, the timing is to be able to be in a position to apply for some of these monies that are coming down the pipe. And then it would probably be a multi-year, multi-phase construction and development of, but, uh, you know, one of the first things that we've identified is a larger promenade that would connect the front of City Hall to the mid-block crossing, and then eventually to Mr. Juad's mixed-use development, as well as repairing, uh, irrigation and drainage as a first step.
Okay, good, and you actually touched on another question I had. Uh, because we, we've, we've discussed this before about what we are going to do with this, uh, with City Hall, uh, with this, with this space. Um, and as, since this will be a multi-year, multi-phase thing, uh, if we end up doing something with the building, with this building, um, it sounds like we'd be, we will be able to adapt whatever we do with the lawn, with whatever we do with the rest, rest of the campus.
Yes, I would, I would say that, that's a fair statement.
Okay. All right, well, that's, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Wh- whenever we talk about the campus and, or the front lawn, I'm always, it, it recalls a, a memory, um, several years ago, we had a lot of financiers come to Southfield. The individuals who actually handle our retirement funds. We had all of, a bunch of them came in from New York, all over. And they, and, and in conversation, they were just impressed with the, uh, they had only seen Southfield from our annual reports and numbers and reports. They had never been here. Uh, they were literally impressed with the lawn, the, uh, campus and the, uh, appearance. So, uh, just from a concept standpoint, I know this is, uh, this is a, takes a little process, but what is the wildest concept that, that you guys have been thinking of? I ask that question with respect to, I don't want to necessarily see the lawn turning-
the lawn turning to a fairground. I don't know, I would like for it to stay as, you know, professional-looking as possible, just to display the seriousness of what we do here as a city and as a council. So, if this question is answerable, you know, what is the wildest concept?
If you follow this pointer here.
What?
So, in concept, the very simplest is making a connection, out City Hall, across the flag, and straight across to connect into the mid-block crossing, providing a wide enough promenade that then the north and the south side become separate programming spaces. But there's still the vision through the entire, from north to south. By providing a wide promenade allows for many other events and a much more accessible to the public for a potential stage that gets built adjacent to the library. It also allows for the potential for some type of focal point in the center, whether that be the holiday tree lighting, whether it be a fountain, whether it be something else. And then providing all of the infrastructure, electrical outlets, the irrigation, lighting, that allows for better programming, more accessible. Those are the simple concepts for the redevelopment of the front lawn. But it will tie in with the commercial development happening across the street and allow Parks and Rec, the library, and the city center to have much more programming or better accessible programming throughout the year. So, nobody's planning on creating a carnival-like atmosphere or overdeveloping it. We love the simpleness of the open green space. We just want to make it more functional, be able to break down the spaces for other events if needed, and to make it more usable and user-friendly for any events that we do have.
Well, I understand the concept of usefulness and making it functional. But you did church on the fact that it's not going to look like a carnival. And that's what I'm afraid of, putting too much out there. It takes away from the stateliness of the environment, and it takes away from the green space and those type of things. But I guess it's to be seen, but if it's become, if it's functional, increase the usefulness of it and become functional, I'm with that. But we want to stay away from the atmosphere of a carnival, just too much going on. You know, things will still come down to that. I know this is a concept, but I just want to make sure the concepts are not taken away from the seriousness of what goes on in this building and what goes on on this campus.
If I may, Madam President, if perhaps Chris from OHM could just talk about what we've done at the library. Because, you know, what I hear Councilman Brightwell saying is about being tasteful, professional-looking, and we want the space to be able to have other functionalities that when we do the family fun night, we do the concerts. I think that's, in fact, what we've done with the library gardens and what you're planning for the front scape. That was work in process. We've done, we did the garden work. Chris, I'm going to, if I, if you may, Madam President?
Sure, yes.
Just to walk counsel through, because we haven't been together and haven't had an opportunity. I think we shared the maps of what we had done in the library. But if, Chris, you want to?
Absolutely. And good evening to the council. It's a pleasure to be here to talk about a number of projects. The library project, as Mr. Zorn referred to, are a series of projects that we worked with Ms. Mary Beal to identify, to help enhance the aesthetic and function of the library, which included the entrance plaza right now, where there are primarily bricks. We've looked at replacing that with landscaping and decorative concrete in a way that creates a more inviting space, a more elegant space, that allows for the programming inside of the library to come out into the landscape. So, there's a variety of sizes of spaces. So, smaller spaces for, you know, groups of kids, you know, 10 or so, to some larger spaces that, to be able to be programmed. We landscaped along the edge to enhance a landscaped bed that hadn't had anything in it for quite a while and solved some drainage issues. And then in the reading garden, which is the enclosed garden space along the rear of the building, we removed the pavers that were failing there and added, again, some decorative paving and landscaping and programming spaces that will allow for the indoor-outdoor connectivity. And so, there's consistency all around the library. But I think maybe, Mr. Zorn, where you're going is that through those efforts, we now understand what the desires of the library are. Through working with Ms. Fields and her team, we understand what their desires are for their facilities, for this front lawn, for their programs. And so, we see a great opportunity here to bring all those things together in a way that this space allows for events when there want to be events. But when there's not events, it's an elegant space that enhances the experience of just being outside and being in the civic center.
And I think it's interesting that these have come together. Councilman Hoskins' remarks, you know, we did this study a couple of years ago. This council, you know, under your leadership, will now advance at the front yard. We've done the fiber optics of connecting our buildings. One of the next votes early on will be, we need to finalize that we're staying here. And I think I've spoken to all of you, and there's a clear consensus. This council, what you've done under your fiscal prudency and discipline, you now have built a $16.5 million reserve. We'll be running this front yard exercise. But in the next few months, we are going to have to address what parts of the campus we undertake. Is it City Hall, Parks and Rec building, the Muddy Hall? The former library, which we affectionately call the Muddy Boots building, was done in the early 2000s. There's some improvements. The pavilion, we'll focus some efforts on that as we go through the next few months. Finance Chairman Brightwell and I have had some of these conversations. Preliminary, we'll advance that now that we're starting to come back together. This is such a unique opportunity with this funding opportunity. Many of the items we're talking about, the irrigation, it has been shot the entire time I've worked here. The grounds, I've seen the kids on the... I watched Councilman Mandelbaum go down the zip line and land in a vat of mud, like all the other kids. We need to start addressing this. I understand that the front yard contains a lot of the spoils from 696, an awful lot of clay. And we need to address that so we don't have this drainage problem. As city planner Crowe said, when we planned Evergreen Road, we were planning to bring this forward. And I think this is kind of just the perfect opportunity. When Shelley Freeman had told us that this grant was coming out, that they were talking about this in October, November at the state, we kind of thought it might have an opportunity. I didn't think it was going to move as quick as it did right after the holidays. So, again, our request is to retain OHM and allow us to undertake this study to, for appear a grant application. And I imagine we'll have a touchstone for counsel before we submit.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I'm in favor of the study. However, I do agree with Councilman Brightwell regarding some of the uses on the front lawn. Also, and it's not relating to this item, but I'd just like to put it out there. If there is ever a grant opportunity like this for a zero-depth pool, I hope that administration will bring that forward to council. That's also something we've talked about on this campus for a long, long time. It seems like it always comes down to the funding. And, you know, I don't know where a zero-depth pool fell within the Parks and Recreation Study, but I just think it's something that's very, very much needed in the city of Southfield. And I'd like to see that as a top priority coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah. I think that the front lawn, for years and years and years, and it's stated in our written material that it was something to be looked at and not stepped on. But I think that it can be a positive feature to the whole campus if we do it right. And one of the things that I think is a concern, and that is the traffic circle on the south end. Trying to get out of there at 5:00 at night is more of a challenge than most people are up to. The other question I have is, is the parking lot on the south side over by the Muddy Boots, is that still a demonstration project, or is that beyond its lifespan?
It is still a functional demonstration project. And you can see it after a good rain, just looking at the two surfaces. It functions as a stormwater feature. And I'll just say this, you know, we're talking about the American recovery, the opportunities that will be coming to the community as part of climate resiliency. And you saw it tonight in what Habitat's presenting for these homes and these energy-efficient homes. We've got a team of people, your master plan has spoke to sustainability. Your new gyration in your master plan embraces it even more. We're looking at the ICLI standards for climate control, but climate resiliency, more stormwater issues, reducing the city's carbon footprint as an organization, what we do to support. In many ways, this is another step on what we did in our energy block grant work in 2010, '11, and '12, when the federal government was funding that. I think we're about to see a very exciting time and a different level of engagement, climate resiliency. Our Parks and Rec plan has supported it. Our city's master plan is fully embracing it. Next will be the council stating goals and beginning to quantify what those goals will look like. So, yes, that project works. I'm sorry for the long answer.
Okay, if that's a working model for groundwater, you know, saving groundwater and stuff, maybe that ought to be folded into any parking lot changes that get made in this overall plan in the other parking lots. The other thing is, this is a unique design in this building. Is there something that may enhance the front yard by doing something to the skin of the front of the building that would, you know, set it off in a way that would be a head-turner when people see it?
If that's a question for me to respond to, I think that's, it's a really excellent thought and something we'll explore when we get underway. I think it's a great idea, because I was, you know, thinking about how can this design make sure that it enhances the programs and the seriousness of what happens in this building? And I think through a proper design, it can really elevate the whole civic lawn and really tie the lawn with the city hall here in a way that creates a really strong relationship and one that's elegant, but also civic in nature. And I think, you know, we'll look at whatever we can work with in a way that'll help make that happen.
Yeah, it might even be just creative lighting.
Yeah.
That would set off what else was being done with the front area of the property.
Yeah, it's an excellent idea.
Okay?
If I could, and I'm sure the mayor would add to it, when the building was first built, there was very minimal landscaping. It was supposed to just be straight lines and looking at the building. And over time, we've beautified the front of the building. But I think that the key here is lighting.
Yeah.
It could enhance the building. I don't think anyone would want to go back to the minimalist landscape because everyone's proud of how nice it looks out in front.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. Has there been any thought, I know that the cost may be high as a startup, but to put turf down instead of grass and seed? With all the use that we're talking about of having all these programs on the front lawn, you know, all the wear and tear from people walking and rain and mud, and would it make sense to look at a turf option?
It very well may. I don't, I think that could definitely be an option. It's one we, you know, when we get underway and start looking at the design, I think that's an excellent idea as well. And we can do a cost-benefit analysis there to see, does it make sense in terms of the maintenance that you spend year over year? Does it make sense to maybe switch to something artificial in nature?
Okay, thank you.
In addition, are you also, or would you also consider wayfinding signs? There's a lot of things that's going on here at this campus. And a lot of times during the summer months, for sure, I got asked, where is this and where is that? How do I get to point A from here?
Absolutely.
So, can we include wayfinding signs? And I am very happy to hear of the partnerships because the library had a lot of fantastic events go on this year, this past year. And again, a lot of the questions came as, where was the auditorium? Where do I go to hear the storyteller? Where is this and where is that? When they had the gentleman come in to play the... I can't remember which instrument he was playing. But no one knew where to find them. So, can we have, in addition, wayfinding signs? And I know that there's trails in the back, but nobody knows where they are. They're like, well, I know there's a trail over here somewhere. But those kinds of things would be very helpful.
Absolutely. That's an excellent idea as well. And we did, within our work plan, we've included a focus on signage and wayfinding within this initial study to at least identify what a budget may be to look like to advance that effort. Because you're correct, there's, I think, a good signage and wayfinding program would definitely benefit the civic campus.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam President, within our annual financial report, there's some TIF and funds that have been closed out. And some of the preliminary conversations has been wayfinding in the DDA. Before the economy crashed, the Downtown Development Authority was looking at wayfinding. We've heard wayfinding along the Northwestern Service Drive between Losser and Telegraph, the former Copper Canyon site, to help direct people through there. And I know Planner Crowe, through the city center, has been advocating for a funding source to fund it. So, those three items were conversations that Planner Crowe, Alice Sevis, and Ms. Freeman and I have discussed as we look to close that out. We're working our way through some of those issues there and all the other areas in street lighting.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no other ques... Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Brightwell?
No, I just want to make a motion that we approved the authorization for the city to retain OHM.
Support.
Okay.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for us to approve OHM for the Civic Center lawn study. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Good evening.
Next, we have the authority to retain Clear2Go Inc. Services.
Madam President, at this time, the administration is seeking to buy a software product or service from a company called Clear2Go from Rochester Hills to assist us in tracking employee COVID information, particularly the registration of employees who are vaccinated. And then for those employees who aren't, the requirement that, as it stands now in the Sixth Circuit, would need to get testing once a week. This is a very highly contested area, and it's within the court systems right now. I think over the weekend, a lot of us probably watched and listened on C-SPAN to various arguments made. But the administration is hoping to... But, uh, the administration is hoping to simply get a vendor lined up, ready to go. As the, as the rules came out by OSHA, a federal, federal government agency. Very little guidance until just recently from my OSHA. That, uh, we would have till January 10th today for our employees to register February 9th to start testing. And most recently, uh, I'll let City Attorney King take it from here, what came out over the weekend.
Yes. Um, good evening, counsel. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
So, um, as Administrator Zorn stated, there is a lot going on in the court because OSHA, um, had, um, developed a temporary standard for employers with over a hundred employees. State and local governments are not under the jurisdiction of OSHA, but each state is supposed to have their own plan. That is at least, um, similar to OSHA's plan. So as everything was taking place, especially last Friday in the Supreme Court. Uh, we had been following, um, the Michigan OSHA or what we call my OSHA. And they really hadn't stated anything on their website, but I did receive something Friday that went out that they are developing a plan. That is the plan that the city would be subject to. Um, and because, uh, they also understand there's a lot going on because you have different federal, um, circuit, court of appeals. A Sixth Circuit, which is Michigan, said lift the stay, um, comply with the mandate to have your employees, report their vaccine status. And then you had two other circuits that said no, um, so that is why it is now in the Supreme Court. So right now we are just trying to be prepared. Thankfully my OSHA is coming out with a plan and that is the plan that we will be subject to. Um, should the OSHA, um, standard, um, not be overruled by the Supreme Court. So there's a lot, as Mr. Zorn stated, everything's fluid right now, but we will be following my OSHA. And so if you ever wanted to go to that website, then they are now starting to give more information. Um, so that municipalities such as Southfield will know where they stand as things occur in the Supreme Court. In the U.S. Supreme Court.
The state was talking January 24th as the date.
Yes, so, yes, so their plan has to be at least, um, I can't think of the word I'm trying to say, but at least equal to the federal OSHA. And because of everything going on in the, um, Supreme Court. They, you know, violations could be issued by the federal court, uh, federal system starting February 9th. But again, we're under the jurisdiction of our my OSHA, so depending on what happened, they would, uh, really not start looking until January 24th. Again, depending on what happens with the U.S. Supreme Court and how they will rule on the federal OSHA.
So our, our thought and hope was to have a council resolution supporting this. You know, we're going to continue to monitor the situation in the courts, but be prepared to execute if we need, need to. And we're, uh, in addition, there is, you know, we have nine collective bargaining groups. And we've got to be sensitive to different, um, Michigan public employment labor laws that apply to how we handle those situations. Very, it's a very fluid, uh, situation and we've got to be prepared to pivot in the appropriate way.
Thank you for bringing this to us because it is a very important, uh, topic and very relevant and timely. Did we, Councilman Frazier?
Yes, uh, regardless of how the Supreme Court ruled, whether it's yes or no. And if it's no, we don't follow the OSHA rules, but we go back to the state rules of my OSHA. Somebody in the city of Southfield has to manage this. And it, you know, I don't think that it's, we can wait until we hear what the result from the Supreme Court is. In order to start figuring out how are we going to deal with it here in the city of Southfield? Who's in charge? Uh, and there's some Ts to be crossed and Is to be dotted. But I think we can lay out a skeleton of a plan to, is it going to be the human resources department? Is it going to be the supervisor or the, uh, leader of each, each department? Is it going to be our legal department? Uh, you know, who's going to be the, the arbiter of, of the plan?
That's one of the things, uh, Madam President, that, uh, I know myself and our HR director liked is a little bit of diff, distance. That my supervisors and managers and directors don't have to be involved in that. Uh, it's, sometimes this becomes a very confrontational item. Some folks feel so strong about not getting vaccinated, um, you know, it, it causes tension in the workforce.
Absolutely.
Uh, I've got employees who, uh, why isn't this person, why don't you make them? Right? This is a daily theme that, you know, myself, HR, we're all, all addressing. And I think every one of my managers and directors, we're all struggling. I, I'm very pleased that most, you know, almost all, I, I believe all of my managers and directors are vaccinated. And, but I'd like that distance for those folks.
Sure, sure.
The information's recorded as this would, you know, depending upon the court's decision. If someone's not vaccinated, they'll have to do the testing weekly.
Right. And I know that over the, the last couple of years, uh, which I cannot understand. The, uh, uh, first responders have been so recalcitrant about, uh, being vaccinated. Some are and some aren't. And, uh, and I don't know if they're trying to turn it into a bargaining position or, or, or what. But, uh, it just befuddles me of why someone that's, uh, dealing with people, they don't know if they've been vaccinated or not on a day to day basis are resistant to getting vaccinated themselves. So, but again, it still has to be dealt with at our, at our level. Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
So let me, let me understand, uh, when I was reading this today, I went and turned the cable TV on just to see what the Supreme Court, well, they would say. So are you asking for preliminary approval of this so you can act if you need to act? Or so if by approving this, you're not going to go out and just go spend 22,000? We don't need it? Or, or is it against the law? So what, what's the plan?
The, I, I would really like to have clear direction from the courts. Uh, I won't be pulling the trigger until I have my counsel, uh, my HR director and, and we're going through. But I needed to be queued up to go, uh, in, in the event and, um, that we get, this is the requirement in, in, in the state. I like the idea of an independent entity handling this for us. But I, 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 I think we pull the trigger, um, as, as soon as we get, uh, some clear direction from the court. And I, I, I think probably the Supreme Court. We've, we've spent hours discussing this.
Right. So once the Supreme Court, you know, if they approve OSHA's plan, then my OSHA's plan has to be no more stricter than what the federal OSHA plan will be. So it has to be at least equivalent to that. So by having the Clear2Go ready, if we need, then that would be helpful. Because then we'll only have so much time before they'll, I think they'll be generous with everything going on. But at some point, we will have to answer if that was to be the final answer to comply with this mandate.
Okay, okay. So if, if we, you know, give you preliminary approval to, to deal with this company Clear2Go. In the event things are okay from a federal, uh, legal standpoint. And, and you will confer with your, with HR legal and, and yourself and you guys will, uh, agree that we should employ this, this firm because it is legal and we need it and clearly, and so, so that's the rationale?
That, that is the rationale.
Okay, alright. Alright, and I guess I can see where we need some stuff like this. Would we, and we now obviously don't have the in-house capability of doing it if you have a, well, it's easier if you have an outside entity doing it.
It is clearly easier to, if we have an outside agency, plus the, the, there, there will be some resistance from some of our employees.
Sure.
On this. And I'd like to distance some of my supervisors and managers from that level of confrontation.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Ready for a motion?
Seeing no other questions, there you go.
I move that the Southfield City Council authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into a service agreement with Clear2Go Incorporated of Rochester, Michigan for annual subscription, um, for an amount not to exceed 22,500 dollars.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Brightwell for us to approve the authority to the mayor and clerk to retain Clear2Go Inc. Services. I'm sorry, the city of Southfield to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign for us to, uh, use the retain Clear2Go Inc. Services. As we just discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, council, we have one ordinance to enact.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1747.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks for us to, the approval to enact ordinance number 1747. The rezoning request with overlay development district development agreement of Rand Construction Engineering, Inc. PZR ODD 21-0004. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next we come to our communications. And the city of Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed. Such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace. By disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council. And may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. That being said, we are now under public communication. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? If so, please come to the podium.
Greg Keeler, resident of Southfield. Um, I would like to talk about the fact that our communication time, when I first started coming to these council meetings was five minutes long. And then all of a sudden it got moved to three minutes long. You have gotten constant complaints about the time being shortened. I'm trying to understand how come the residents are last on this agenda? I didn't wait this long to be able to speak and then my time has been shortened. I then also don't understand that I can remember one time I came late. And I think it was only three people here that was here on that time. And it was a snowstorm outside. And the president didn't want to let me speak because I came in late on a snowstorm. That was the first time I ever seen the, all the council say, plus all the other elect officials say, let him go ahead and speak. He's here. I don't see that type of working relationship between us in the city of Southfield. I, I seen that loss. I see a more of a us against them than a, we all working together. And we all communicating together to make this a better city. I look at the communications that we had, which we'll probably go back to again, that were on the web, X. Those were some of the poorest, sorriest ever I have seen communications. I would look at the ones or go to the ones that we have on Zoom with Parks and Recs. And I never seen the problem that we have with these. These, we have all types of noise and everything else going on. People don't know when they are being called or anything else. People don't know when to answer or speak on the thing. But the Zoom meetings, no problem. I can't understand how come you can't use our money to go to a system that is much better? Because if this is what our kids are getting for their education, I can understand the problem. The communication thing, we just need, you know, our time back. It shouldn't have been taken from us. We elect y'all, not for y'all to sit here and tell us to shut up and you only got so much time to speak. And if we don't like what you say, we don't call the police on you. That is inappropriate behavior. And it needs to stop. There are things that have been done. Is that my time?
Yes.
Okay. I will go on, continue next time.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will now declare the communications, public communications closed. And I will move to the council portion, uh, and I'll start and go around, uh, Councilwoman Banks.
Um, I'd just like to wish everyone a very happy new year. And also remind, um, everyone that just because you're vaccinated and you've had a booster, please don't let your guards down. You still have to wear a mask, you still have to wash your hands, you still have to social distance. Some people say why? The vaccines are just there to protect us and hopefully not make us as sick as if, um, prior to being vaccinated. So the, our COVID numbers are high, but it looks like the, um, death numbers are coming down, which is good. So just please remember until we can get more people vaccinated and hopefully COVID will go away this year. We just all still need to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, thank you. I have a vet item which I, you know, obviously if you are in the sound, uh, in the listening area of my, uh, voice. If you know a vet, although you might not be a vet, you could pass this on. Sleep and the VA is sleeping P, sleep and PTSD. They are pushing the fact that a good night's sleep literally helps you out with your PTSD. And for additional help, most vets you are able to sign on to My Healthy Vet. And there was a section there that says healthy sleep. So, uh, please look, take a look at that and/or if you know someone who has PTSD. So please look, take a look at that, and/or if you know someone who has PTSD, have them to take a look at the, that section, and/or talk to your provider at the, at the VA that deals with PTSD and sleep. The next item that the VA is, and I guess the Department of Defense is also pushing that January 11 is National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. And they suggest the individuals wear blue on January 11. And if you are, you think you're aware of individuals who are being involved in human trafficking, please bring this to your VA provider, attention to, to assist you of your health and safety, and/or to assist anybody else with their health and safety. The next item, I would like to ask Mr. Zorn, will we alert the, our peace officers, that we could have peace officers in the future?
Yes, I made a note earlier. I'm not.
Okay. Yes, sir. Okay. That is it, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes. I, I wish the best, 2022 for everyone. We've suffered for a couple of years with COVID. We've tried to do the best that we can, and, you know, it seems to be, every time we think that's, it's on its way out, it redis, rediscovers itself. So I agree with my councilperson, Ms. Banks, that keep doing the things you need to do, wear masks, wash your hands, keep social distancing, still be friendly. One other thing I'd like to reestablish, if we could, as a council, meetings with the school board. I think there are a lot more things that are common between the two of us than are different. And I, I think to make Southfield a better place, that if we work together and each of us do a little, little bit, we can make Southfield a better place. But our children are our future, and we need to do the absolute best that we can to make sure that we give them the best start that we possibly can. So I would encourage us to sit down with our, the school board, and meet on a pretty regular basis. And I've got a couple of ideas that I'd like to throw on the table.
Well, thank you. And it's funny you should mention that, School Board President Charles Hicks did reach out to us, and we have, or will be scheduling a meeting here shortly, either February or March, depending on COVID statuses and that kind of thing.
Very good.
Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you, and of course, want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I hope we have a great 2022. And I just want to piggyback off of what my colleague said about making sure we're all doing what we can to lessen the impact of COVID in our community. One of the things that you can do, of course, is to get tested. We have, Oakland County is doing testing here on the campus from, at, on the municipal campus underground parking garage on Mondays and Thursdays from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30. They're available through appointment, as well as same-day drive-ups, but the, the drive, drive-ups will not be accepted after 3:00 p.m. If you want to do an appointment, you can go to Oakland County's website, or you can give them a call at 1-800-848-5533. Yep, just do what we can to make sure you're staying safe and making sure you're, keeping your family safe. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. Happy 2022 to everyone. I also, I want to take this opportunity to thank the city staff that worked so hard putting this chamber together to make sure that we're all safe, and that there's enough spacing and distancing. I know that it was a little bit challenging trying to put everything together and adding mics in places where we don't normally have them. So thank you to everyone who helped with that. As my colleagues also mentioned with, with the COVID variants, I know Mr. Frazier just, Councilman Frazier just made a comment about how, we don't know where it's going to go, but there's a new variant out there called the Delta Cron. So things are just moving in many directions. I did want to mention, we have a lot of Parks and Recreation activities that are starting up. The, unfortunately, the daddy-daughter dance was postponed due to the rise in COVID cases. But they have a lot of basketball leagues and training going on at Beechwoods. They have, if you want to learn Spanish, they have those classes. And so there's a lot of different programming that is available through our Parks and Rec, and you can give them a call anytime during business hours at 248-796-4620. And you can also look in your Parks and Rec guide that you received in the later part of December, that has many different programs that are running through, I think, April or so. So feel free to peruse that, and hopefully you can take part in that, and the city is being cautious with, and putting proper safety protocols in place to make sure that all these programs are run with the utmost safety in there. So thank you very much, and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone, too, that we are back in person, and these meetings are fluid, which means we are going to continue to monitor the stats and the information that's, that's being disseminated. And as much as possible, we will continue to have our face-to-face meetings, but if things change and we have to go back to virtual, we will let you know that, too, as soon as possible. But in the meantime, by us meeting face-to-face, we're asking that you would continue to stay safe, continue to wear masks, continue to do all the things that you know you need to do to maintain your health as well as those around you. Please keep our councilman Cruz in our thoughts and prayers, as he is fighting COVID at this time. He is currently being quarantined at home, so let's keep him in our thoughts and prayers as well. And just know that we are doing the best that we can. We ask that you to be patient with us. Sometimes our technology doesn't act right, or we have interference and different things like that, so be patient with us. We are working towards improving in all areas. But again, it is a fluid situation. These are new situations for us, and we are working through. We do hear all of your concerns, and we are working to resolve most, if not all of them. So with that, thank you again for joining us tonight. Welcome back, and we'll look forward to hearing from you next week. Thank you.
Next week, week after next.
Week after next. Next week, we'll have our Martin Luther King event on Monday. Hopefully, all of us will be able to attend. And, okay, thank you. Next, we'll have, hear from our mayor.
On that note, Martin Luther King, a reminder that if you're going to participate in the drive, we're not doing in-person walk, we are doing the car parade. You need to register in advance, and that information is available on the Martin Luther King website. It will take place next Monday, starting at 9:00 a.m. at Hope United Methodist Church, and there is a route through Southfield. There will be a program simulcast, as well as a food distribution program or giveaway following the, the drive through the city. I'd also like to just note, on a sad note, that some of you will remember a very longtime principal of Southfield Lethrop High School, Jim Smythe, passed away on New Year's Day. Mr. Smythe had been a principal for roughly 30 years in Southfield, as well as a teacher, and was very highly regarded as, with his leadership at Southfield Lethrop High School. He was 88 years old, and unfortunately, although he was vaccinated and boosted, he died of COVID.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Thank you, Madam President. It's nice to be back together again. The room logistics is a little awkward. I do want to thank our staff for the setup, to my management team in helping us get through and navigate through the last, almost two years, is, is, has been a real challenge. And, you know, I, I think we need to step back, and we've still managed to accomplish quite a bit. And in the next few weeks, the city's financial report will come out, and it is one of the strongest in my history here, and I think this council needs to recognize that and take stock, and that's an accomplishment. I think we have some exciting opportunities in front of us as we move forward, and how these recovery dollars are going to be spent, how we can access other dollars from the county, the state of Michigan. They're all opportunities. The infrastructure bill, we're still learning pieces about it, although the third, the second component, the, which many have called, you know, speaks to greater support for our social infrastructure in this country, has a number of pieces that could be very interesting and exciting for Southfield, hoping that the federal government will continue to move that agenda forward. Northland Project, if you haven't been by, is progressing very nicely. As Planner Crowe mentioned, across the street, that concept is coming together very well. A lot of details still need to be hammered out, particularly the brownfield plan, but they're moving forward. You know, there are exciting things that are going to happen in 2022. As all of the electives have echoed, we still need to continue to be cautious and address this virus for the, as the real threat it is. I know as of Friday, the, the last numbers I saw were, in the 360-plus persons had passed away from Southfield. That is a real loss for our, our community. I don't know anyone who's not been touched or challenged personally by this, and I think we need to continue to be Southfield strong. And I can tell you, your 600-plus employees are still working to make that happen, and every day, we're taking care of the people's business, and we will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, thank you. I just want to piggyback on what Council President stated early about this meeting in person. Our meetings are governed by Michigan, on the 1976 Michigan Public Act 267, which is the Open Meetings Act. And that, up until December 31st, is what allowed us to meet virtually, electronically. But after December 31st, the only members of a public body that can meet electronically would be someone that is on military duty. And the act basically states that all meetings of a public body have to be open to the public, which is why we are currently meeting in person. And unless the state legislature comes down with something else, as they did during the COVID pandemic, then we will have to comply with the Open Meetings Act the way it was before COVID.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Happy New Year to everyone. We just got an email, the MLK parade is actually full now. So we just, most of us just got an email at 8:30 this evening, so you still have that opportunity to watch via the Zoom link. So again, I want to thank my colleagues in making this meeting possible today. It's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, meetings, phone calls that take place to, well, it may look simplistic, but a lot of ideas were exchanged to try to get it right, and we're continuously working as we navigate through the COVID. But my sincerest thanks to our city leadership and our colleagues for making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Our treasurer is not here, planner, no city assessor, we have nothing to schedule. Is there any other business that we need to? Hearing none, I now declare this meeting closed. Thank you. Good night, everyone.